I looked down, those thumbs up. Okay, welcome all that are already here. Uh, this is the, the, uh, we are calling to order the school board's special meeting work session. Um, right now at, are we still within six o'clock? My watch is not working. Yes, six o'clock called to order. All right, directors and Diana, good evening. We, uh, we will point out to everybody that you just barely walked in. So you were, yeah, I know that's what I'm saying, but we'll, we'll make sure that you are seen by everybody. Um, so, uh, directors, just briefly, um, our 1.1, our board member organizational time. Is there, um, is there anything to, um, that y'all have that you haven't relayed via email prior? Uh, one, one quick note for, for our next general meeting, um, well, along with our change of venue, we're going to do some rearranging of the agenda. So, so get ready. So don't be quick on the mic when we say at 2.7, that's we, we have the arrangement ordered. And Maureen will make that motion if, if she may, so that it's clear. And then if we have questions, of course, we can ask them then. So, um, other than that, I don't know of any other organizational items superintendent. Wonderful. Um, we will now welcome, well, down to 1.2, uh, Saisa School District Teacher Librarian, Ms. Jennifer McKenzie.
Right. Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Okay. So if you want to pull up slides, um, happy school board appreciation month. Thank you for allowing me to share our library media services awesomeness every single January. And we'll just wait for slides to pop up. And, um, within my slides, I do have tons of content. Anytime you see a blue thing, it's a hyperlink that will take you to more resources. There's tons of videos, et cetera. I'm going to be moving through this content at a quick pace. Okay. So again, thank you for allowing me to present. Um, happy school board appreciation month. That's the next slide. Uh, I particularly love that we have student representatives this year. That's so awesome. And then I'm going to quickly cover, uh, connections that we're making through library media services. I'll talk about our three-year strategic plan, and then I had to ask for you at the very end. Okay, so this is our fabulous library team. I just want to point out that we see as a team, every single child, every single year they're in the school district, and that is super powerful for one department. So at the elementary school, we have Julia Craig, our library assistant. She sees all 500 kids every week for book checkout and a story. At the middle school, we have our library assistant Val Graybill. She sees sixth, seventh and eighth graders every single week through English classes. And then students get to hang out and do maker space activities. And then we have our library assistant Vanessa Flossy at the high school. She's slinging Chromebooks left and right all day, every day. She's revitalizing the space and she sees students for book checkout through English classes and this year pride. Next slide. There we go. Okay. So this is a lot about me. The two things I'm most proud of on this slide is that it is my 20th year as an educator. I'm an English teacher and a teacher librarian, and also at the same time, I'm celebrating my 20th wedding anniversary in April. That's my husband in the bottom right-hand corner. Um, and yeah, that's Army Jen. I'm also a former Army Military Medical Service Corps officer. I did acting command for the brigade at Walter Reed Army Medical Center in Washington DC. I've worked at Army hospitals all across the country and I led a humanitarian mission in Wayway Tenango, Guatemala. Okay, next slide. So when I arrived four years ago to the school district, I surveyed the land. I looked, uh, assessed the district. I could see the curricular gaps that existed for library media science. But when I started asking people like, what are you really wanting? Everybody said connections. We were in the middle of a pandemic still. That still rings true today. I assess our staff every August during in-service and people are still saying they love connections. Um, whoops. Yeah, next slide. Okay, so we started our virtual field trips. Last year, we really focused on taking virtual field trips inside of teachers' classes so we could like celebrate everybody's awesome. And then we were able to make these really cool like choice boards. So students going into middle school and high school could kind of like survey and look at electives before they actually registered for them. And this year, we're really focusing on read alouds because we're constantly trying to improve literacy in the district. We always, once a month, go to the Oregon Coast Humane Society. They're our number one community collab. And then we're just doing lots of read alouds with kitties and puppies. The videos on the right, you have to check those out because Vanessa Flossy was able to capture the entire roadie court reading, Oh, The Places You'll Go. It's super awesome. Um, and then speaking of the Oregon Coast Humane Society, if Florence, Oregon were to award a community digital citizenship plaque to anybody, it should go to Elizabeth Thompson. She is demonstrating daily through social media content for the Oregon Coast Humane Society, what professional digital citizenship looks like. She's using her tech powers for good. Every time she posts something, kitties and puppies get adopted and money comes into the organization. So when we're talking about digital citizenship, we have to think about that. We can't always tell our students what they can't do or block tools. We have to be the adults in the room and like model it for them. So Elizabeth Thompson, shout out to her. And I want to highlight a couple of really cool inter-district collaborations, K-12. So I think that we have a beautiful opportunity in this school district. All of our schools are located down one road. It's not like that other places, and I feel like we really need to harness on that opportunity. So the first two pictures on the left, I have to give a shout out to Lauren Sevejas, our high school art teacher. We started this creature collab last year. Um, I see the kids, uh, for curricular lessons once a month at the elementary. We're doing things like maker space, engineering design process, prototyping, et cetera. Um, so the kiddos with me, we worked on creating creatures using the engineering design process with construction paper. They were shipped down to the high school and then Lauren Sevejas's ceramic students recreated the creatures. The kids got to meet up. It was super, super joyful. Um, and another shout out I want to give to you, that picture in the upper right-hand corner is Patrick Looney. We do a ton of collabs with our CTE departments. And again, our library media science standards are reading, information literacy, digital citizenship, and school-wide, district-wide technology integration. So we're constantly trying to reach out to CTE and see what we can scale back to provide open use access in our libraries. And so that's things like the, the virtual reality headsets and 3D printing. And a final thing I want to point out about this slide that's super magical is anytime we have the big kids teaching and working with the little kids in education, that is when the magic happens. So we just need to grow more of this. And it's super, super joyful as well. Okay. Statewide connections, I just want to point out, I am the incoming president for the Oregon Association of School Libraries. Um, I'm also looped in and do work for the OLA. And then I'm also in the State Library of Oregon's Library Services and Technology Act Grant Team, which awards huge competitive grants across the state of Oregon. So that's really good. That knowledge is really good for our district and our region. And then I am nearing the halfway point of my doctoral program. So this is just highlighting connections across the country, across the globe. That's why I love, um, learning with Antioch University is because we have a global educational practitioner perspective through that college. And then this slide is just showing my Fulbright connections. So I'm also looped into an international global network of educators. We're working to grow global competencies and just make education better for our kids across the planet. And I completed my Fulbright, uh, teaching three-week experience in Peru this summer. It was super awesome. And that leads to this slide. We are actually about ready to embark on a really cool collaboration between Mocagwa, Peru, Saisa School District and St. Louis, Missouri. So, um, Dennis Barrios was my Fulbright partner in Peru. Anne Cummings is a sustainability teacher, my Fulbright travel partner, um, who's in Missouri. We're bringing all of our learning communities together through Zoom. We're going to be learning language, culture. We're going to be creating some multi-genre pieces together. And I just want to give a shout out to Rafael Garcia, our woodworking teacher, Kelly Dotson, our tag coordinator, Christina Ori, our middle school art teacher, and then Hillary Roach is our seventh grade art teacher. They're all in some way, shape or form, um, going to be a part of that project among a bunch of other people. Okay, so this is getting into our next three-year strategic vision. And, um, off to the left are links to all of our national standards, rubrics, et cetera. And then going down one through five, number one, our, uh, goal is to continually increase certified teacher librarian instruction and aligning K-12 library media science curriculum. Again, this district had been without for about 15, 17 years before I came. We're still growing that area. Um, and all of these goals are based on research and best practices. Um, number two is just increasing events and programming offered by our classified library assistants. Number three, you always keep an eye on increasing resource circulation like books and Chromebooks. Um, number four, we're continually trying to make our libraries more magical, increasing flexible, innovative learning spaces with maker spaces, podcasting, et cetera. And the last one, number five, is just training our team. You have to be trained to work in a library. Okay, this next slide is a snapshot. People ask me all the time. They're like, Jen, how on earth did you teach 1,200 students every single year? Like, what does your day even look like? So I have a flexible point of need schedule. Any orange block on there is me in direct instruction in one of our buildings. Any yellow block is some kind of professional collaboration and all the blue stuff is probably working in our libraries. So that's just what my day-to-day usually looks like. Um, this slide speaks to goal number three, which is keeping an eye on resource circulation. So here's the deal, you should be constantly looking at your book circulation because it's literally a literacy heartbeat for the school district. And you should be reading that data just like a doctor reads a cardiogram. Okay? So coming out of the pandemic year, you can see that huge data dip. We exceeded the last 20 years worth of data that year after the pandemic. And this past year, we're still doing awesome. We have a slight little data dip there. And I attribute that to the K-12 English Language Arts curriculum adoption. As a former English teacher, when you're doing a new curriculum, sometimes the independent, independent reading slides a little bit, but we're still doing awesome. So that is some of our book data. Okay. This next slide, um, we just got word from Gale databases that we are ranked 22nd in terms of Gale database usage out of the entire Pacific Northwest. So that's out of Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Alaska, British Columbia, and Hawaii. And I'm a former athlete. I have never been so excited in my life to be 22nd. Because all of those schools in front of us are like Seattle Public Schools, Portland Public Schools, Anchorage, Alaska. They're like school districts, 50 to 60,000 students. And here we are, little old Saisa School District, and we're on the board. So what this really speaks to is the amount of research, database usage, and aligned research writing that is now happening across the district, and it is something to be celebrated. This next slide is just some statistics about increase in usage in our top portals. This is just a snapshot of what our Oregon Library Media Science Information Literacy Curriculum Standards look like. So you can dig into that if you're interested. And then some of these moved around a little bit, but again, when people ask me, how do you teach 1,200 students? I have to be very strategic about how I map out my lessons and my time. So this is just my guaranteed viable curriculum for this school district. I see every kid, every single year, every grade level for some type of research writing, curricular-aligned lesson. And some of the assignments change with staff turnover and curriculum adoption, but there's just like a general idea. Um, okay, near, I have a couple of slides left. So, uh, goal number four is to always increase magical, amazing learning spaces every year. These are pictures from our high school where we've been doing a lot of work in that library this year. So we have a sewing maker space station. That top picture is Jaclyn Johnson students coming in for maker space activities. The top right, I always have a music maker space station in every library I work in because I play the piano. And also music is amazing for the brain in terms of tag kids and neurodivergent thinkers. And then the two pictures at the bottom, I want to give a huge shout out to Dwayne Bean. He's a math tutor at the high school. We've been working since last year to grow our podcasting studio at the high school. So he's like written over $5,000 to $6,000 worth of grant money. Um, there's a picture of Riley. That was our first podcast episode last year. And that picture in the middle bottom is Terry Straley, one of our high school English teachers, and her students are in the podcasting studio, uh, recording a portion of their essay. So super cool stuff. And then we do have student dream teams at every school. They're just groups of kids who love the library, who help us do the work. So at the elementary school, we loop in the Viking leaders for morning enrichment. Uh, this is just a snapshot of all of our middle school dream team kids. We have over like 75 to 100 kids floating through the library at lunchtime. And so we need help running our maker space stations. And then this is a snapshot of our high school students who are doing amazing work as well. Uh, just a couple of slides left. So goal number five is to train our team. So we base everything we do in the library off of research, best practices, and national standards. So we follow the Oregon Association of School Library. A huge chunk of our standards come from ISTI, the International Society for Technology and Education. We follow the Future Ready Network and we're now looped into Fulbright. And I do want to say thank you to the district for, um, providing PD funds for our people to take a trip to Eugene. We got to go in one day and tour at least six different K-12 schools and learn awesomeness and bring it back into the district. So that was super cool. Okay, my last ask, I'm nearing the end. So I mentioned that Fulbright project that we're collaborating on. There is a really awesome collaborative Kind Eyes art portion to that, that anybody can participate in. And I will be, uh, presenting and taking these to Denver when I present at the ISTI conference in June. And so this might keeps on sliding, sorry. Um, all you need is a three and a half by eight and a half piece of card stock, and I brought a stack if anyone wants one. You can use any medium you want, ink, paints, stitching, whatever. The goal is to draw kind eyes. So think about what our eyes look like when we're being kind to one another and we're smiling. They're kind of squinty, right? On the back of the card, you are going to, on the back of the card, you're gonna, uh, write down your name, age, school, and in one sentence, answer the question, what is one dream you have for our world? And then I need them all by May 1st, so you can drop them off at the schools or the libraries. Think I have one more slide after that. That's just all my social media. Again, I'm attempting to model for our learning community what professional appropriate social media looks like. And that is the end of my presentation. I really appreciate you giving me the time to share our library awesomeness with you. And happy school board appreciation month again. Thank you, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Jennifer, before you leave, uh, directors, do you have any, any questions for Jennifer? We've got a few minutes before our, our 1.3 needs to start. Good to go? All right. You, uh, apparently you were quite thorough. Thank you. And Chris, we're having technical difficulties with the, uh, mic stand. May have been user error, but I doubt it. I just saw, I just saw those accolades, so I doubt it. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Appreciate it. And that was May 1st that you need those back? Excellent. Okay. All right, uh, directors, moving on, uh, special presentations. This is a board appreciation video. And I see computer mouses clicking. We are ready when you are ready.
Happy School Board Appreciation Week.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, School Board, from the fourth grade class of Mrs. Neder. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you!
Thank you, School Board members!
Thank you!
Thank you, School Board, for all that you do to give us the things we need to learn.
Thank you, School Board!
Awesome, that was fantastic. And thank you to all of you that, uh, that put that together. That was, uh, that was fun to see. Yes, thank you very, very much. Um, okay, uh, well, directors, we have about six minutes left in our work session. We can take a slight recess before the general meeting. Okay, so work session adjourned. Yes, I will do that now even. Um, also, for all of you that are in attendance so far, there is Wi-Fi. Um, it's the 97J dash public. And the, uh, password is all lowercase, school board, January. Again, 97J dash public. That's the, that's the one that's open. The other one says secure, so 97J dash public, all lowercase, school board, January is the Wi-Fi.
Instructing a writer of the YouTube program. So we've got students here in the destruction program. And I think some students may be come over to Mabelton too, to build tiny homes through the square run villages. And it's just like such a win win situation here. Kids get to learn destruction and unhoused folks get something, a place to live. Thank you all for continuing to use our services.
So I mentioned that the, the, it makes a vote. So superintendent council in November unanimously approved this plan. And our school board, which is a member of, we did in December. And we're asking our component school to make a, take some action by lunch. So if there are any questions tonight, be glad to answer them. And also at any point during the school year, it doesn't have to be about the local service. That is a question about services. If you reach out and ask me or tell me to do that, superintendent school.
Directors, any questions for Tony? Uh, you, you, the, the first thing you mentioned was, was action by March, March 1st. So, so that would be on our agenda next month.
I'm sliding my life right.
Yeah, you'll have a resolution for February for a second year approval of the junior line. All right. So I think we're good. Thanks for that. And David's Eric.
Yes, sir.
You're just going to be quiet over there?
It's great to be back.
Okay. He says it's great to be back at Saeed's law. At least that's what I think I heard. Good. Welcome back. I didn't know you when you were here, but welcome back. Um, Eric Danutron did. Um, okay, so, well, moving on. Yep. Okay. Okay. I was just informed that we have a little glitch on YouTube. And so we apologize that you had lost audio. Um, but apparently it is back up. I did see Chris running around like a superhero. So well done. You made it happen. Even came running with some box that is now lit up spying on everybody. So, um, we have, we have 10 minutes. Um, and we just moved to 6.1 and keep going until seven for 6.6. Or do we need to make another motion on that?
No, again, we follow along. And I think the easiest piece to do in the next five minutes is our consent agenda.
Okay. Um, and no, no need to amend our agenda approval?
No, again, this is a, a break of this line.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had run through, we're running through. So yeah, so let's go to 5.0. We're jumping that forward again. The consent agenda. So consent agenda, consent business. Item 0110245.0. Uh, this month's consent agenda contains the following items. The December 13, 2023 board minutes. Uh, the December 2023 financial statement. Uh, monthly enrollment upgrade, update. Uh, policy GCPC, GDPC retirement of staff. Uh, resolution 12132363. And, uh, your budget calendar for 2425 planning year. A resolution 1213236.6. Administration recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented. A board's reminded that any consent item can be pulled for additional discussion as a singular approval.
Okay, directors?
Chair. Mr. Chair, uh, we have resolved that the Saeed's law student district board approved the consent agenda as presented. Resolution number 011024, manage 5.0 consent agenda second.
Excellent motion made to approve item number 011024-5.0. Motion made by Director Miltonberger, seconded by Director Sneddon. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, so those in favor? I oppose. Okay. That was two minutes. Okay. And so, uh, again, I'll, we'll just keep moving through into our seven o'clock, uh, point of time. Uh, item 6.1 on the agenda. Uh, 0110246.1. First reading of policy EHB, EHB AR cybersecurity. Uh, cybersecurity requirements are increasing for schools in Oregon and set forth in legislation. Uh, this policy and administrative rule framework would be the foundation of local guidance to address issues of information confidentiality, information integrity and information availability. The overall goal is to protect student data, both academic and personal, while still proving effective information management between the school district and other authorized agencies. Again, this is a first reading. The board could move this, uh, towards the consent agenda the next month, approve it now, or, uh, consider this approval after a second meeting. Thank you. Uh, directors, any questions on this upfront or, or of those options that we have? What are we thinking?
I know that we approved tonight.
Approved tonight on first reading?
Yeah, rather than move to consent agenda.
Oh, okay. Motion to approve on first reading of, uh, EHB and EHB AR cybersecurity. Item number 011024-6.1. Motion made by Director Sneddon, seconded by Director Barnett. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes unanimous. That was two more minutes.
It's, it's all right. Um, again, uh, policy review item administrative rule KG AR facility use procedure. Um, 0110246.2. This is a review of an AR. Uh, local board's policy KG, uh, community use of facilities allows for the use of district facilities by a wide variety of community groups and other organi, and also other organizations beyond school hours and the regular school year. After consultation with, uh, our insurance agent and liability consultant for district, the insurance requirement uh, of the administrative rule facility use procedure should be updated to include automobile usage on campus by members of community groups and other organizations when providing the district with a certificate of insurance for general liability. The selection for automobile coverage must also be designated on the certificate submitted to the district. Uh, there is no additional cost to the reservation group, uh, provided that they have insurance, uh, coverage in place at the time of request. Uh, when organizations seek a certificate of insurance, the automobile in coverage must be contested when they designate uh, the district to be named as one of the additional insured policy parties in the policy. Uh, the use of automobiles on campus during community facility use requests has been a minor incident in the past uh, to protect the desert from liability related to automobile, automobile related accidents on campus. Certain facility use requests will also include this automobile coverage enforcement. Um, again, looking at your administrative rule, these packet. Um, uh, going, uh, to page, uh, 35, 4-4. Um, is the passage on insurance requirements. Um, the blue text is the new added text. Um, in addition to the general liability insurance coverage, the insurance coverage must also prove automobile liability endorsement in the event of any accident involving a vehicle on the applicant group, uh, while on district ground automobile. Automobile liability will be designated at 1 million yards combined single limit per accident. Uh, superintendent may require additional, uh, insurance depending on the nature of the facility use. Um, and again, the reason this comes up is that as we have had community groups on campus and they have driven their own vehicles, there have been accidents with their own vehicles. Or, uh, one time somebody knocked over a whiteboard in the parking lot. Um, that should be on their organization's insurance. So that's the reason for the gentleman. And if they already have, uh, group insurance, it's a matter of changing one more box where they send the certificate our way.
And so this isn't a box that they have to check if they're just using the facility, but their activity does not involve the vehicles? Or this is, this is they're coming, parking in the parking lot and leaving, they still check this box? Does that make sense?
It does. Because again, let's say we have, um, a group that's going to be using, uh, again, like a big tall hitting facility. And they're going to have 30 parent car cycle during the hour.
Got you.
The, the sponsoring organization, you know, the little league group would check down their box. So that way, if there's an accident involving any of the parent vehicle's kicking up kids, that would be covered under their policy and not a function of the district.
Excellent. And so your recommendation there, there's, there's no res, resolution required to adopt this administrative rule. And there was a question.
Yeah.
But come with it.
Yeah. Unless there's further clarification on this, um, it would be adopted as read since it's simply the administrative law.
Yeah. Does anybody need further clarification? Okay. So then it can go, uh, it can be redirected to the policy committee as stated there. Now we have two minutes.
Okay. So, um, is our, is legal counsel online yet? Is he in? Okay. So moving to your agenda, um, uh, again, this is, uh, charter school contractual procedural session. Item 0110246.6. Uh, as requested by members of the board in December, its agenda items for the development of discussions regarding the application and subsequent contract phase of the charter process. Again, uh, this is discussion on the board. The resolution is provided for any reference if there's an action that requires, that arises from this discussion.
Excellent. Okay. So as we are, um, well, yeah, as we are moving forward into the contract phase with, with that, with that different stuff. Um, we had submitted a, a clarification request, um, from, from the charter school group. And then we got their response. And so now this is, uh, directors, this is our time to, to discuss that response. And then we'll have momentarily, we will have, um, legal counsel on Zoom with us or they just a phone call.
No, he's being on Zoom.
Okay. Yeah.
It's not showing up.
Yeah. So he's not showing up. So we will, we will follow Ms. McKenzie's lead and just have a hushed library tone. Which is difficult for me, y'all, by the way. A hushed library tone and that's, that's hard. That's hard. Well, we also could begin discussing it before he's listening. No, then we have to, then we got to bring up speed and repeaters now.
Again, he did have another appointment and he'll throw today. So he may be coming back around to the office, but I wear a helmet.
Oh, perfect. Chilled up, right on time for my watch. Seven on one computer.
Rich. Hello, everyone. This is Rich Conley calling in to the board session. Can everyone hear me okay?
No, no, that's.
Yeah.
One second.
Okay. Try it again. See if we can hear you now.
Uh, can you hear me now? Testing 123.
Yeah, that, that we're getting head nods from the, uh, from the audience. So yeah.
That you, you can hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, if you, if you ask us for a thumbs up, can you hear us?
Yes, there's a little bit of an echo effect, but I can, uh, I can hear you. I'm going to turn up my volume.
Okay. Excellent. Um, all right. Well, first, thank you for your time this evening. Uh, we understand that you had another appointment that hopefully you didn't have to rush too much to, to get with us. But we, we appreciate your time.
Of course.
As, as we're moving forward into the contract phase with the, with this, uh, with the charter school proposal. Um, we, we sent that letter. I'm assuming you, you read that letter. Um, our letter to the charter school group. I saw a thumbs up. Fantastic. And, and then I'm assuming also that you have read their response. Okay. A double thumbs up even. Okay. So, um, directors, if, if y'all don't mind, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of open with a, with a question. Um, well, with, with my own, my own first question. Um, I'll, I'll steal the mic as long. I don't even, I don't even mind. Um, but, but Rich, as, as we are moving, as we are moving forward, um, really just with kind of what the, what the steps are, maybe this is, maybe this question isn't pertinent right now. Um, but as we're moving forward, I would just like to know, to, to know the, the steps moving forward that, that as we produce a draft, the draft contracts, then they go from superintendent to you to us as, oh, as those are being, as those are being written. What, what, can you walk us briefly through like what are, what our steps are right now? If this is, if this is the, if this is the right time for that question, let's, let's, let's start there if we may.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I have been kept apprised by, um, you. Yeah, absolutely, and I I have been kept apprised by um you and indirectly by the board in terms of providing me the materials uh to get me uh kind of up to speed to where we are currently. Um essentially, my understanding is there was an initial proposal uh from the charter pursuant to ORS three thirty eight um from SVCS and the um superintendent. And by extension, the board identified some areas in the application, uh some areas that needed correction, some deficiencies uh in the application. Um and uh the the district um through the board and the superintendent relayed that to um the folks over at SVCS, um the the charter proposal group. And my understanding was that um in fact, to pick one example, I think uh you kind of the the bigger issue we're going to be talking about today, um among I think some other areas that were identified in that dialogue was this issue of affiliation with um the Hillsdale College. And my understanding was that um in connection with that, there were some concerns raised about that pursuant to ORS three thirty eight, which essentially um bars um uh public um school district, you know, which receives public dollars um from really kind of establishing or approving a charter that affiliates with a uh a religious sectarian or political organization. And um again, initially, my understanding of the process was that um you and your board, I flagged that as an issue and that SVCS in fact then said, okay, we're going to remove that statement of affiliation as part of our charter application. So that was done. I think procedurally here, the conundrum, it's and what's kind of different than the majority of charter application review processes that I've been involved in is then we received that revised application, but then there was some discrepancy with that application with what SVCS was actually, I think, um publishing on their website in terms of uh affiliation with Hillsdale. As part of that, my understanding is that the district um through either the board, maybe a letter from the the board chair or maybe from um you, Andy, um there was just a query and a little bit of confusion about, well, wait a minute, you know, your application no longer has this affiliation statement, it's been removed, but your public website still has that. And as part of that dialogue, by understanding is SVCS in fact came back and said, yes, that's true, we still have an affiliation and oh, by the way, we intend to continue having that affiliation. So we have a very um, you know, a very concerning procedural issue here, which is the board essentially identified some corrections. The charter application group made those corrections on that area. But then after the fact, essentially said, no, now we have an application. Uh and then statement of intent saying essentially, that's changed, we're we're not going to change that area you red flagged. So in my view, procedurally, we're we're kind of back to square one in terms of this process, because typically what I see is a a charter group, and again, my, all three of my kids went to charter schools. Um uh my wife created a charter school, I've been involved in the charter process as as an attorney. What happens is the uh the group of individuals wanting to propose the charter goes to the district. A lot of times there are areas of deficiency that the district board will say, please go back and address these things. And the charter either does it um or they say for whatever reason, and there are tons of reasons and issues under the sun, financial, yes, sometimes religious and political, uh where they say, we can't do it. And essentially, we're either uh we we can't proceed with the district or we're going to try going to the state of Oregon to get approval. Here, this is a very, it's a it it it's it's almost like, like I said, we're being knocked back to square one because you, your district, your board identified an area of deficiency. It was ostensibly corrected, but now after the fact, it it turns out, I think, not to be the case. And it's, yeah, it's almost a situation where we're now back into a position where the original red flag issue is on the table. So it 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 it's common sense that the the board cannot now approve that because it previously identified that issue as um an area requiring correction. So procedurally, in my view, we're we're kind of back to that um question of, you know, uh SVCS needs to kind of state what's going on here. And and there, I don't know, there may have been further discussions on that front. But my understanding is that at this point, SVCS is not intending to change its position. My understanding is that um I think counsel for the Hillsdale College actually submitted a memorandum arguing why the district should essentially ignore uh ORS chapter three thirty eight on that affiliation uh requirement. And I I've reviewed that memo and respectfully to my learned colleague over at Hillsdale College, they they seem to identify two big issues. One is that um uh the language of ORS three thirty eight, which talks about affiliation with one of these prohibited groups, affiliation means essentially, well, it it's only a violation if Hillsdale College is actually controlling SVCS. And they cite a bunch of other statutes in or under Oregon law. Um but the problem is they cite provisions from completely unrelated provisions of law like corporate law, corporation law, uh tax reimbursement law that have nothing to do with the provision in three thirty eight dealing with approval of charter schools. In this situation, um if this was to go to some kind of litigation, like let's say uh SVCS sued the state of Oregon uh uh or the Oregon Department of Education because of this requirement, um a court would look at the language of three thirty eight and essentially they would apply what's called a plain language interpretation of that statute, which means literally the judges would crack open a dictionary, typically they use Merriam-Webster. Um because the statute itself doesn't define it, but they'd say, okay, the word affiliation or affiliate has a common English meaning. And so I did that here and I, in fact, I have it, yeah, so I just pulled up Merriam-Webster's um uh dictionary website. And affiliation does not mean to control. All it means is that you have an association with another organization. Though, for example, like I said, I've been involved in other charter applications where um a local charter school will affiliate with a uh a um philosophy or a uh a school like on the East Coast that applies like a democratic learning model or some other alternative learning model, and they will associate with them to get learning materials um to maybe get some sort of approval or stamp of approval saying, yes, you can use our name, but there's no control. These external agencies don't have to um control or dictate the actions of the local group, which is ridiculous because why would some Boston school have to do that? All all affiliation means is you have you have kind of associated yourself with a model or some other organization or club or something like that. So with again, with due respect to the counsel for his to Hillsdale, I don't agree with his interpretation or counsel's interpretation of uh affiliation means Hillsdale has to control. It just means that um SVCS is looking to Hillsdale as kind of a a model, right? In other words, our school will use practices or approaches um that Hillsdale employs um to call it kind of that a a model of learning or some other, you know, some other philosophy, whether that's political or religious. But that's another question. The other uh area that their council identifies as a red flag is they're saying it's unconstitutional not to approve this. Um but again, there there's a big problem with that argument. He he uses an argument of uh religious association. The problem with that is that applies to individuals and no one on this board, uh nor you, Andy, are telling any members of SVCS uh or any of their uh uh you know, affiliates or any of their patrons that they can't practice the religion of their choosing. That's what that's what um religious association means, it's an individual right. What we are saying, though, is that the state of Oregon and Department of Ed has created a statutory framework that does bar to get a char- public charter school approval using public dollars. If you're going to do that, there is a bar on affiliation with a religious or political institution or sectarian institution, which is what the the statute, the term the statute uses. So there, that's a completely different situation. And that that's embedded in our constitution, Oregon and the federal constitution, which essentially creates a separation of church and state. We can't have a pu- uh a public school district employing public dollars. Like if this is a private school, they can do whatever they want. But the problem here is we have public dollars that could be potentially used to create schools that are politically based or um religious based. Um and again, our the the federal constitution prevents that and the Oregon constitution is even more stringent in its um dictates about separation of church and state. So again, both the arguments that counsel have submitted here are are novel, but um to me, when I look at the them, they don't hold any water. Um so ultimately, I think we're back to the question of, you know, we're now being, the district is now being presented and you're being presented with a packet that now has this red flag issue that's been resuscitated and SVCS is essentially, to my knowledge, has not indicated any willingness to correct it by removing it or having some affirmative statement saying that, no, we're not going to affiliate with um Hillsdale. So i- in my view, like I said, we're back to square one.
That's that's, oh, well, I'll confess, that's kind of surprising to me that that the that we would be back to a square one on that. Um uh now granted, I'm, oh, am I, what was that?
At some point, I just have a question.
Wait, I'm sorry, Maureen, I still didn't hear you.
I said I have a question at some point.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
This is a quick time.
Yeah.
Uh this is Director Maureen Luthner, my question is, uh we're going to hear all this uh information tonight um regarding all statutes and and the information you're giving us. Um what exactly are the consequences of what happens if the board does decide to move forward with this? What what would happen in that case if we decided that we've already uh made that motion and we want to carry forward? What do you see as the consequences are happening at that?
Yeah, I mean, beyond beyond the straight violation of three thirty eight where the Department of Ed can get involved and take corrective action, there are practical, real world consequences that frankly are are even more troubling. So for example, uh let's say hypothetically, the board was to approve this packet and essentially then we have uh within your district, a a charter school that is employing public dollars that integrates a religious component to it. Um for and and if any special need students attend this school, which we have to allow that, right? Unless SVCS is telling us that no special need students are going to attend the school, which is another problem. Um but if we have any students that are attending that school and it's and that school is deemed to be a publicly funded school that is espousing a religious or political component under the regulations, your district can lose its entire operational budget. Um it can be forfeit by the Department of Education. And I I I've usually been in this scenario where uh parents want um a district, they're unsatisfied with the district programming and then they demand that the district pay for a private program or some other program and it and it has at least some component, you know, of of religion or um, you know, something structural about it that espouses religion. Uh it's a very dangerous situation because the trigger point for that is very low. And if a district is found to be in violation of that, like I said, the penalty is for revocation of federal dollars. Uh not just for that one student, for the whole district. Very serious. And you can kind of see why that is, right? There's, there's a very clear mandate in the federal and Oregon constitution that creates a a bright line between um, again, with the private school, no problem, but 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 public funding of religious uh based or religiously affiliated institutions, separation of church and state.
Thank you for that. Now, now is that um that you use the term religious component? So so if the if the if the curriculum and the class, the class instruction incorporates no religious component in in that in that instance, that risk is moot. Because part of the part of the of a draft contract and and some of the contracts that we're we're kind of modeling our own after um from Lowell and and David Douglas uh districts, uh those those have a a uh a component within the contract review that that the um that there will be a review of the curriculum. And so if the curriculum itself is not a religious curriculum, are we are we still running that same risk?
Well, we are because like um so the provision I'm talking about is a more general regulation that prohibits that type of funding of programs. Uh here, the district is constrained by an even more specific statutory provision in ORS chapter three thirty eight, which is the specific charter review and application process. And again, the language there is very clear that it it just says we can, the a board cannot approve um any charter that has a, you know, basically a religious, the term they use is non sectarian, but a religious um component. And what worries me is the case law, um the the courts are very gray about where that falls. Courts have struggled notoriously with defining what that is. Doesn't necessarily have to be a religious curriculum, but it could be an underlying philosophy of the school. Uh it could be things as basic as the symbology and structure of the program that have religious ties. So all I'm saying is that the risk uh as your attorney, it does not make sense from my perspective to take a potential risk and to roll the to roll the dice um on that uh and and be relying on a narrow, fine distinction on that level. The way that chapter uh the provision in chapter three thirty eight is worded is even more specific and prohibitive than even kind of the general regulations and general separation of church provisions, uh se- uh separation of church and state provisions in the constitution. It just says you cannot approve it if there's any kind of association with a group like that. And and like I said, um I I I would not feel really secure defending the district uh in in that situation where we don't have a lot of knowledge about the extent to which Hillsdale and SVCS are cooperating uh with each other or modeling or patterning um activities, philosophies uh beyond just, you know, in in class curricula. Uh but if there's like an underlying political philosophy or religious philosophy, my worry is, as broad as that uh prohibition is worded, we could still be nailed and we could still face the consequences. Um and I and I don't want to put the district in that position.
Rich, this is Diana, Director Diana Pinnott. The um what I'm wondering in terms of the curriculum itself, a classical curriculum has a longstanding basis of being um formed on the foundations, moral foundations that are long, long rooted and I think basically the Catholic um organization initiated it years and years ago. Um is there are there other schools in the state of Oregon that are using classical education? That you're.
There are. Yeah, the classical philosophy is an educational philosophy. The problem in this situation is that, uh like I said, hypothetically, if SVCS, well, this is what happened, SVCS came forward and said, well, we're using a classical methodology for our in-class curriculum. Fine, that's something that the board can review, like um Andy was saying, after the fact, review the specific curriculum, make sure it aligns with Oregon state standards, all that. The problem was that affiliation statement. It's that's totally aside from the classical model. The problem was they were directly affiliating with an institution and an entity that is known to be um problematic, I'll just leave leave it at that, aside from classical philosophy. And the 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 board, you all said, please assure us that you're not going to have this affiliation, not with the classical model, but with this particular institution. SVCS then said, okay, we'll do that, we'll take it out. And they did, to my knowledge, right? And but then after the fact, there were some discrepancies externally about, well, wait a minute, you you told us one thing, but on your website, you still have this, is this a mistake? And if SVCS had said, oh, my gosh, you're right, it is a mistake, we're going to remove that from our website and we're going to assure you in our packet and in our statements to you that we are not going to affiliate with Hillsdale College. Again, classical model aside, I think we'd be in a very different position here. Uh it would be a more typical charter review process. The problematical aspect is that they didn't do that. When when we asked questions, they essentially said, yeah, we're not taking that out. We are going to affiliate with this organization, that's the problem. It's not with the classical model, it's 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 the other issue.
So yeah, Rich, it's Angie. So again, we reviewed one application in May and that was rejected for its legal instructional deficiencies. I met with the group in June, Maureen and Brian and I met with the group again in September, we gave them the notes. We gave them notes on what it was going to take to get a legally passable charter applications through. That was presented and approved by the board in October. And then I had a community member email me and say, a question about their enrollment practice, and on that I saw that we've accepted this letter from Hillsdale. That's what prompted the demand letter that said, is this correct? Produce this letter of affiliation if it's true. And they sent that back and that letter again is, stays terms of what Hillsdale does with them. And it's never been brought before the board. It was never part of the application package. That's what we're talking about, going back to set one. If we could go visit the October application and then they purchase materials and then don't have this formal affiliation, that's a problem. The problem is they have stuck with and said, we have this, we're redefining the term affiliate. And you can't do anything about it. That's kind of where I'm at.
Well, and what I'm hearing Rich say is that we can, the classical education model itself is usable.
Yes, it is.
Are you aware of charter schools in the state of Oregon? Can you argue that?
Yeah, actually, the Academy at Lowell, which is the primary basis for the draft contract that I sent Rich and the board, again, is, is a classical education model school.
Right, and I, yeah, and I want to be really clear again, I don't have an issue with, the, the issue is not with the classical model. That's not the issue. The issue was, and as, as was just outlined, and I don't know the specific dates, but I know the general sequence and what you just said, that comports with my understanding of how things unfolded. Again, the issue here is not the classical model. The issue is there is that statement of affiliation with Hillsdale that was ostensibly corrected, but then due to external, I guess you had a patron flag it as an issue. For whatever reason, the board and you have the power to say, wait a minute, you said one thing in your corrected application, but we're seeing something slightly different. Can you, and it wasn't a, you know, you're done. It was, can you please explain what's going on, is my understanding? And through that process, where we wound up was S V S essentially saying, well, yeah, we are going to continue to affiliate. It's essentially a bait and switch. It's, we said we'd do something. And then after the fact, when, when you all confronted S V C S, S V S said, oh, guess what? We're not going to do that. And I don't know if they said you can't do anything about it. You can do something about it, which is by law, you, you, you can't approve, you can't approve that packet.
I think that there's misunderstanding in terminology. I, you know, I, I don't believe that there was any type of bait and switch. I, I believe it was in just an oversight and, and like I said, and, and misunderstanding of of terminology. I believe the classical education curriculum itself is, was the intent or is the intent of a charter school. I don't, I don't believe, according to the information that we received, that there was any intent to utilize the services of Hillsdale. They're, they're simply intent to utilize the curriculum itself. So I think what I'm hearing you say is that you're advising us not to prove that Hills, that, that S B C, S B C that should not be utilizing Hillsdale's classical curriculum because it is associated with Hillsdale, but they could utilize classical education curriculum from a different source.
Not, 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 not quite. I, I don't think you have my intent entirely correct. First of all, whether or not this, this was a misunderstanding or a misstatement, the reality is you flagged that as an issue, right? This board specifically flagged that affiliation with Hillsdale as an issue and a matter that required correction, correct? And then they, they did that. They did that. They submitted another application to you that removed it, that affiliation statement. My concern is whether this is a misunderstanding or it's something else. They came, you, you essentially got information that suggested that perhaps that was not the case. And then you correctly said, hey, can you please clarify this? And essentially they have now refused that. To me, that's not a misunderstanding. That's an affirmative refusal to correct a required correction in the packet. Like I said, the issue with classical is different, and I'll paint a scenario where I think this would have been fine. If they had just said, we are a generic classical modeled proposed charter school, the classical model in and itself isn't problematic. And you had said, oh yeah, but you've also submitted this letter of affiliation. And they said, whoop, if that's a problem, we're taking that out and we will affirmatively assure you that we are not going to affiliate with Hillsdale College as that entity operates. But we are going to be a classical school. Like I said, I think we'd be in much smoother waters here, but we're not in that position. We're in a position where a, a group has affirmatively refused to correct something that you directed them to correct. And that's very different. And that's very, I want to make that crystal clear. That's very problematic.
Okay, Rich, this is Director Pimlot again. I do not believe that there was misunderstanding personally, but my question is, if the board will decide not to move forward and, and not approve, we send our approval. Do you have a suggestion or information for the charter school that would, if they still want to continue, would they have to start the process till the over again? How, how would they proceed if they still wanted to jerk it down? And how, because we have received that letter of intent, how would they show us and prove that that affiliation, that letter of intent, that connection with the Hillsdale College is off there? Do you have any suggestions regarding those, those issues?
Yeah. And again, I've been on this, in this position as a parent on the other side of this process as a group proposing a charter. If, in my case, it was the Oregon City School District. But, and, and I can't advise S V C S. They're not my client. You are all my client. But if I were in S V C S's position, I would say, okay, this board, the superintendent has flagged an issue with this affiliation. We previously committed to dissociate from that affiliation. Let's work together and assure the district that we are not affiliated with Hillsdale, but rather we are going to use a classical, a straight classical model devoid of any kind of political or religious overtones that Hillsdale brings into the picture. And, and let's make this right. That's what they should have done in the first place. And that, if, if, if I were in their position, that I would tell my proponents, we need to meet the district where it wants to meet us. And I think they, they can still obviously correct their application. They're not done, but they need to correct it in a way that addresses your concerns. The other scenarios, and I can't speak for S V C S because I don't know what their motivations are. I don't know what their underlying philosophy or needs are. But if they say, you know what, like if I'm their attorney, Rich, we understand what you're saying, but we really think that association and affiliation with Hillsdale is important. We do, we do in fact agree with the religious slash political tenants of Hill, of Hillsdale College. And we really want to make that integral to our charter program. Okay, at that point, they would come back to you. I don't think you could approve it. But then the, under O R S three thirty eight, they have the opportunity to directly apply for approval with the state of Oregon. So they could go to the state of Oregon and say, well, the U S law did not approve us. Therefore, we now have, what's triggered is our right to go directly to the state of Oregon and the State Board of Ed, have you directly sponsor us. And then it's up to the state, the state of Oregon and the, the State Board of Ed, they can then approve it. I, I would, I'm guessing though, that they would probably have the same concerns that you're having and that I'm having as your legal counsel. At that point, if they refuse to approve it, then I guess if they want to get their legal counsel involved and through the state of Oregon and say, oh, this whole framework's unconstitutional, you're interfering with my right to religious association. The, the entity that would get sued is the State Board of Ed, O D E and the state of Oregon. It wouldn't be S I U S law. You as a district don't have, we have neither the, the power nor the capability to say, we're going to ignore three thirty eight. As a district, we have to comply with the law. So we comply with it. And then if they want to bring it further up the, the, the chain of command and go to the state of Oregon, they can do that. And then like I said, if the state of Oregon approves them, it's moot. If the state of Oregon says, hey, we can't approve you because of this affiliation issue, I guess they could sue the state of Oregon on some constitutional grounds and go after the state and try to get that whole statutory framework undone. But that's, I'm, I'm saying that's just way above our pay grade. As the district, that's not, we're not in a position to make that kind of call to like ignore a statute and say, well, we think it's unconstitutional. No, we, we basically have to apply the law and, but they, they have remedies. They have, they have alternatives. But if I were advising them, I'd say, let's correct this application and let's assure the S I U S law school, school board that we're not affiliating. And this is just a straight classical educational model, which, and I agree with the board member. I, i- in its pure form, there's nothing wrong with that model. What the problem is, this, this statement of affiliation with this entity, that's the problem, and they need to correct that if they want to make some traction.
Thank you for that. The, I'm not going to look at the other directors so that I, I don't call on them. I want to, this is a, a Director Lacator again, Rich. So one of the, one of the difficulties is I've been reading through, through all of this is, is, you know, it very much seems that, that law is interpretive, right? Like for me, as I read through, everything I read through, the word affiliation and the definition of, of, you know, the legal definition of affiliation versus association, I saw those as very different things. That an association is similar to the associations, well, well, since we exchange, you know, we, we pay for, you know, services from, from either Laney S D O S B A, you know, and, and others that I'm seeing this as, as, as a similar association with, with the clarification, the clarification to our request for clarification, these, these numerous pages. This was, for, for my reading of it and my reading through three, three eight is, this was sufficient to me. And I do, I, I, I agree with Director Pimlot that, that I did not see this as a bait and switch or as a, a, a wool pulling or anything of the sort. I saw this as sufficient. So let's, let's go hypothetical here. You know, we, we heard the, the hypothetical on the, if we rescind our approval. So now let's go, let's walk through our situation of we, we keep our approval and continue into contract phase. This, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but it's my understanding and I can't cite where I garnered this understanding, but that it is maybe who's listening to Kate, what's her name, from the Oregon Department of Education. But it is O D E that will review everything and have the final say. Is that? And so if this, if this comes down to this is a religious, there are religious components in every aspect of the curriculum. And now O D E says, no, not happening. Is, is, is that the, is that, is that our course in our, we're continuing through contract phase? That O D E has the final stamp of approval on it?
No, 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 O D E does not. Yeah. The, the, under the statute, the district board has that affirmative obligation to do that review and to apply the law. What, what can happen is if you deny the application, they then can go to O D E and say, either complain and say, oh, they didn't approve us and we don't like that. Or, and/or they can ask O D E to directly approve them, in which case, yeah, O D E and the State Board of Ed would then have to do its own review. But no, the district cannot shirk its responsibilities. It has to do its own review and application of three thirty eight. We can't just throw up our hands and say, oh, yeah, this might be, this might be okay, but someone else can figure it out. Absolutely not. And if this board, if this charter school gets approved and it goes into operational effects, and like I said, if it turns out that there's that kind of religious componentry or association, and I have to disagree with you. I mean, the, the statutory language, courts would not interpret it that way, in my opinion. They would use a, a, what they call the plain meaning analysis of that language, which again, is just a, and under Merriam-Webster, a connection or association. It's very loose. It doesn't mean control. Though the, the problem is if this charter school gets approved with public dollars and then later on, anyone, a patron, someone who's unsatisfied with what happened. Any, any person can go to O D E and the State Board of Ed and complain, hey, S I U S law approved with public dollars, a charter that has this association, we can be in big trouble. So the analysis needs to happen now. You're, you're kind of the first line of defense. And yeah, they, S V C S has options if you deny it. They can go up the food chain and kind of appeal and go to O, O D E and the State Board of Ed and say, well, they were wrong. You should approve us. Absolutely. But the S I U S law school board, you know, it has to essentially apply that analysis first and foremost.
If I may, I have a kitty's mouth in here, Rich. I also, just addressing what Director Lacator said, I, I don't think that letting them, you know, go up the chain is being a good steward of the relationship that we have. I think it's important for us to be, and a lot of us sat in that session at the school board conference about, you know, there are districts who are charter school friendly and there are districts who are not. And I feel like we would like to be a friendly district for charter schools. So why, why challenge that and why not just say, hey, listen, let's get Hillsdale out of this. Let's go back to the original application that was approved. And let's move forward rather than giving them the, you know, oh, well, take it up the chain and, and, you know, get in trouble later. Or we get in trouble later. Let's, let's make this a nice relationship. And before I'm done, I would also say regarding this piece of it, not only is it a violation of the statute, three, three eight, we've heard overwhelmingly from our community members that that particular piece, the Hillsdale affiliation, partnership, whatever you want to call it, happens to be, in my assumption, the, the biggest sticking point with the community. If that is out and we're back to the original application that you all approved in October, then I think we can move forward and have a nice relationship.
Yes, the October application is usable, been approved by the board. And again, it is devoid of any third party affiliation. And, and this, the formal letter that, that states their terms and how they are using materials was not produced until after the fact. It was never produced during any of the application phases. They had Hillsdale material mentioned in the first application. We met with them twice. We had a four hours worth of meetings. They made the corrections. And then we approved the application that's in October for the classical model, which is usable. Then after, again, what appeared on the website, a letter of clarification was sent. Then they returned with, and this is what we have. And we're redefining the term affiliation, which again, which is called U, is from a different standard. So again, if they want to use certain materials, a lot of them are free and downloadable and they can use that. But the terms that are in this letter, again, have a greater level of control and oversight that this board doesn't even have over a public school. And so taking a step back and what was approved in October is workable. But incorporating this back in takes you to where we were in May. And they can check that out.
And yeah, what I want to say too is, again, as someone who's been on both sides of the equation here is as a school board and a superintendent, there's a reason why we want to have these applications crystal clear and fully approved by everyone. The board, superintendent, the charter folks, we all want to be on the same page because if there are issues down the road later about implementation of their plan, about what the expectations were about how they would operate, we want to have a plan that is crystal clear. What we don't want to have is a situation where, like right now, we have this, like I said, and you know, whether it's a, a, an intentional thing or a misunderstanding, we now have this statement that, well, we're not going to remove or the affiliation letter has not been removed. If it's approved as is, we, we cannot then later on down the road say, well, wait a minute, S V C S. Now we're hearing stuff about religious componentry, political messaging, all that stuff outside the classical model of education. At that point, we'll have no enforcement mechanism because they'll say, well, guess what, board? You approved us when we told you we weren't going to remove that letter. It, it makes a lot more sense for the board to say, we're willing to work with you. We want to be charter friendly. We want to be charter friendly, but here, here's what we're comfortable with. Here's what we need you to do to address our concerns and that you will operate as a school with educational fidelity, and that it does not include an affiliation with Hillsdale College. So my question for them is, why just remove this letter? What's, it, it gives me pause because again, if I were them or their patrons or the parent, I'd go to them and say, what's, what's with this letter? Get rid of the letter, tell this, tell the board, give them assurances that we are not a political or a religious institution, nor do we affiliate with one. We just want to apply a sound classical educational model. So please just get rid of it, correct it as we originally promised, and then let's move forward. But right now, my understanding is we're not in that posture, for whatever reason. And I can't speak for S V C S. I, I don't know what they're, I don't know what's going on there.
Sorry, so again, reading a little deeper down in 338, again, you have 338-015, which has the prohibition. And then you go to 338-115, and it says a public charter school may enter into contracts for services from a school district E S D.
Uh-oh. Think I'm losing. You froze up, can you repeat what you just said, is that Andy?
So 338-115-8, public charter schools can enter into contracts for services from a school district E S D.
Andy, I've lost your audio, can you hear me? I still can't hear you. I, where I left off was we were going through 338 and we were talking about certainly, you know, contracting with E S Ds, but then you cut off. Do you want me to try logging back in again? Give me a thumbs up if you want me to just try logging back in again. Hello? Can, all right, I see someone raising their finger, maybe if that's a hold, hold position. Let me see here. Oh, there we go, you're back.
Okay. So again, ready for we cut out again, going to 338-115-8. Again, the provision is for who a public charter school can associate with or get support services, and it would be an Oregon school district, an Oregon E S D, or a public university in Oregon. So those options are available without having to go to a private school.
But that, that would exclude their right to a private source, provided, provided, the private source is not religious, it's carrying in nature, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we're not asking or saying, suggesting to them that I have to use those sources.
No, but again, their response included, we're using their curriculum and their support, which is the affiliation problem in 338-015. And so the bookend is that if, if you get away from that level of support, here's how you can be supported. Because if we go back to legislative goals and intent, a charter school is a group run by, in essence, the teachers in the community, and given operational flexibility, for again, choices in learning, choices in operations. And so if they need support in doing that, there are local and regional resources for that without having to go to a private university outside of Oregon.
So next, that's then, I agree with what you suggested. I, you know, I think at this point, when I heard, you know, Rich, what I believe your counsel is that, that we, you know, basically rescind or request clarification on the, the letter itself that affiliates S V C S with Hillsdale. And so, and so basically, at this point, we're looking for a new application.
Or the application was, that was.
Again, we can go with the October, we can go with the October application because the October application has no affiliation.
But what do we need at that point from S V C S to assure us that they are not affiliated with Hillsdale?
Well, again, we would need to say that this letter dated 17 October 2022, we are rescinding our, our consideration to become a member school, and we are going to operate within the framework of 338. That's what we would need to have.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would be sufficient. I think if we got something, and I, I want that in writing. I wouldn't want that as kind of a outside negotiation. I think just having a simple letter or statement from their, their advisory group or their board to that extent, I think that could correct the problem.
And I think if we did that, and, excuse me, this is Director Barnett, Doc Barnett, I think we did something along that line, because like I said, like everybody's reporting approved the packet, the packet as a stance is fine. I think if there was a board director signed a letter, like you stated, some type of an addendum to the, to the packet or to improve the application, and before they submit, they'd also make a revision to their website, or that would kind of make the letter, the boy, and we, 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 the same position we're right now.
Right.
You know, if that's not, that's my, my wrong with that statement. Well, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, you were actually preparing a contract based upon.
Yes, again, I'd use the local school district model, which again, has a classical education charter school. And again, it goes through the legalies of 338, unless, again, the non-affiliation affiliation. And so again, if we want to go that route, and they want to go that route, they rescind their piece with Hillsdale, affirm that to the board, we go for legally. Now again, they can say, no, we want this, and then we can't affirm a contract with them by law. And so unfortunately, some charter school processes have approved conceptual application, and then they cannot come to terms on a contract, and it dies for lack of contract. And at which one time, they can take this and apply to have ODE be their sponsor. And if ODE takes them on, they operate as they would if it were to be approved. And again, then I would recommend, take your approved application and your letter and say, this is our submission packet for a charter school in Salem.
And Andy, are there four, if I'm correct, charter schools that are sponsored by ODE in the state?
I remembered six from, from our. Yeah. For whatever reason, charter schools been denied by the local district, they appealed. Again, and so there's two ways, again, to kind of skin that and go, hey, we're denying you a contract because of this. Or they can just say, we want this on our own, and we're going to ODE.
Right, keep in mind, that's a very small number, the overall number of charter schools. And my memory is certainly correctly, those situations oftentimes aren't always the most cohesive with theirs. With the district in the area.
Exactly. You know, an unfriendly charter school district, and we don't want to do that. I mean, I don't think.
So again, it's a clarification of, again, this piece came in after your approved application. Again, if you want to go forward with the classical model of affiliation, you again, have to separate yourself and affirm that to the school district. Then we can proceed with a regular classical education model contract. That's, that's definitely doable, that we're ready to go for here.
And then that is what your, your, I know it's very much still a draft, but that is what are the, the contracts that you are drafting are steering board as a whole?
Yes. Okay, so, because again, I can't write, I can't write a contract that is based on some sort of violation of law and not that forward to the board or, or charter. So again, every contract that I'd use as a template from O S B A or O D E has, again, it, it's been an approved contract with another school, no charter. Again, specifically picking on Mountain Valley Academy, that is a classical education charter school with a local school district that has no external affiliation.
And so at this point, do we draft another letter to the charter school to ask for, to state our position at this point in time? Or what is the next step here?
Again, I, I would defer to it, but yes, again, we're, again, this is where we're at. You submitted something to us on December 1st and said, this is our, this is our stance on affiliation with this group, and our response is going to be, thank you for that, but no, if we're going ahead within the concepts of Oregon law, and you want a classical education model, you have to disavow that letter.
I would like to see us send a letter to S V C S very similar to our letter that we sent to them back in November when we asked them for clarification that we all signed, where it's not coming from Andy, it's coming from us, and we're saying, please disavow this, and then we can move forward. That seems to me like the cleanest. Take it off your website, you know, tell us that, that you are no longer intending to do this, that the October 17, 2022, letter, you are no longer affiliated or a member of school, and we can move forward. Because we have their application, and that was sufficient. Their original.
Right, and again, there, there are legal opportunities to say, no, we want to.
Absolutely, but as far as that's moving forward, I think that's the cleanest way. I think, I, I'm dragging it out anymore is totally obscene. It should have been on the agenda last month. I'd like to get it done. I mean, let's, let's give them what they need, let's get what we need, and let's go. That's my suggestion.
I don't necessarily agree with that, and I agree, and I'll, and I'll take ownership that, that this, this could have and should have been on, on last month's agenda since we have, since we have the letter already. And so just to remind your directors, feel free, if you see something that, that's myself, the admin and Maureen have missed, please chime in and, and let us know that, so we can make it happen.
Very good, I appreciate that it's on this month's agenda, filling out the richest council available.
Yeah, absolutely, good. So I, well, you know, I'll, I'll let you into my head a little bit. I'm still, I'm still going back and forth with, with all of this information now garnered, but also with these, with this letter, with the letter of intent, with the, the clarification letter that we requested. I, I mean, my, my scale does not tip one way or the other currently, personally. My, my scale is still, still pretty flat as far as, as far as using the curriculum that has been, as far as the charter school using the curriculum that has been collab, or, or gathered together over, I forget what they said, I think they mentioned a decade or something, to use that classical curriculum model. I guess I, I'm still.
I don't think I'm saying that they can't use the classical education model. I mean, Andy has stated, there are downloadable pieces, there are free pieces. It's the affiliation that is the issue, it's not the classical education model.
Well, yes, let, let me clarify, I understand, and, and Rich explained that well, thank you for that, Rich. But the classical education curriculum, I'm not saying the model, I'm saying the curriculum that Hillsdale College has accumulated and, and worked the bugs out of over the last, like I said, I think they mentioned a decade in, in the reading, or in the, in the letter, that it's, it's that we're saying that you can use a classical model, but you can't use this one.
Right. Because of.
Of Hillsdale. Even though we have all this clarification that says they don't have control, they don't have anything else. Because we are now saying that any affiliation, so, so in moving forward to the contract stage, and if we were to write a letter, we are to say, you are to disavow and never even speak or not.
No.
I'm exaggerating, sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't hyperbolize.
Thank you.
But, but we're asking them to, to, we would be asking them to cut all ties with Hillsdale period.
I don't even think we're doing that because of Andy's, yeah, they're downloaded.
Again, they have, most of their curriculum is free material that can be downloaded and used, which is what I'm hoping to, yeah, and again, and the issue is this, it is the terms in their letter of affiliation. And so again, disavow that letter, and then use the curriculum materials and build your classical education model on your own. Because again, this is something that winds up being, much of the curriculum design and implementation is then not approved by, again, the 38 Public Union Oregon. All changes wind up going to Hillsdale. So if you take just the free materials and use their local operational board, and they need support from M V A, or David Douglas, or Eastern Oregon, that they can do.
Right, and Brian, this is my point, is that Hillsdale is not the only place that they can get this information or support.
Sure.
There are other options, and so because the third party affiliation or partnership violates Oregon statute, then let's tell them that, and then let's let them seek support from other entities. The, the sticking point is literally just Hillsdale. They can still get some materials from them, they can get support from other people, from other districts. It's been stated over and over, there are other options. We aren't leaving them with no option.
Oh, correct, and I, and, well, first let me apologize again for hyperbolizing. I, I, my skin crawls when people do that to me, and then I'm, I'm, I'm guilty of it. So, so yes, they, they can use that curriculum, but then if they ever had a question about the curriculum, asking those who compiled the curriculum.
I don't even think that's an issue, it's, it's literally just them being a member school.
Just this letter of intent.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is this letter of intent that finds.
They can still use materials from Hillsdale.
Get inputs from them.
And now, now.
Not input, they, again, it is, a charter school is again, a locally developed, controlled unit. And if they want support services, the O R S allows that for from public institutions and other districts in Oregon that do the same thing.
So it would be similar to, and I would purchase a software program that had, it was a brand name owned by a Hooper company, and I chose to make changes to that software program, then I would no longer, and so then it would be a spread, it would be my own, and not associated with or affiliated with the, the brand.
Well, yeah, many of the curricular titles that they have are named brand titles that interrecognize, and using those and the free resources to go with them, it's fine. Again, it is this letter of affiliation that, again, violates 338.
And I think we've seen the consequences are so catastrophic of us turning, turning away and violating that statute and moving forward with approval with them, you know, being affiliated with Hillsdale. So why would we put our district at, at that kind of liability? Why would we do that when they could either remove it? Or if they don't want to, they're, they still have options. Again, it is not dead in the water, they can go to O D E and ask for sponsorship from O D E if they want to leave it in. But why would we jeopardize what we have?
I mean, whether we agree with legal counsel or not, personally, to me, is at this point irrelevant. We have legal counsel.
Right.
For a liability stance, but we have to listen to legal counsel, whether we personally agree or disagree with legal counsel at this point. From the liability aspect of the district is irrelevant. I do believe he's given us a reasonable path to move forward, and I don't see from a liability standpoint and clarity and his interpretation of O R S 338.035, and that's what we're paying him to do, is to guide this district of support that I think we don't have a choice but to heed our counsel with the path that, and I don't think it's an unreasonable path to move forward.
No, it's not, we have a responsibility to follow the law and to protect our district.
So Maureen? Okay, well, now everybody's looking at me like I know what to do.
I mean, we could.
I think I'll just need direction at this point, Frank, the board. Andy, would you draft the letter and then zip it out, just like you did with the first one, so that we can, as a body?
And, and so just to be clear, I'm sending a letter on behalf of the board requesting their, again, to move forward, that they would be disavowing their affiliation with Hillsdale, still pursuing classical education model supports from in, from public schools within. from in, from public schools within Oregon.
Um, no. No, I think that they can seek the support where they want.
Okay, yes, yeah.
But it would, it would, it would nice for you to give them options of your, sure.
Okay, well, again, I was just, again, 338.05.
One last thing I just had for Rich, Rich Josh Abbott. So the affiliation and the actual letter of intent is the real crux of the matter in that association? Or am I wrong?
Yeah, I mean, I think that from my perspective, that's kind of the sticking point here. Um, and I think your suggestion to have Andy draft some language on behalf, coming from the board or the board chair, um, I think is an appropriate remedy here, you know, to say, we're willing to move forward, but again, as, as we thought we already made clear in the initial correction, we, we really need to see you provide assurances and corrections that meet our standard. And I think what you articulated previously makes, makes a lot of sense. So, yeah.
Well, the, the one request that I would have then is, is that we each give our, our candid input on any draft letter prior to sending to
Of course.
the, the, the Turk. Well, but we said, of course, that that didn't happen last time.
It totally did.
We, did you, did you give input?
I, I didn't give any because I didn't have, I, I said, yes, I'm, I'm fine with this. We sat in a board meeting, we gave Andy the directions on what we wanted the letter to say. And then he sent out the letter to us before it went out for review. So that would have been our time if we had candid feedback to change the letter.
It, it was sent out and sent the same day. There wasn't some time to really.
I think, I think it was afternoon and mid-morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't the same day.
So you'd like more time?
Yeah, that's all, maybe, yeah, just the, like, the next day. Yeah, just the, just the thumbs up from, from.
And obviously counsel review.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just go to a little tone. Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, well, then, does this, does this conclude our, our 6.6? Is that, is that the direction we're, we're moving then, directors?
Yeah.
That, that, and so the, the bulk, there's a lot of words in that draft contract, too, man. A lot of words. Yeah. So, so the, the bulk of that, of that contract is, is still completely viable. Yes, it is. And so, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yes, yes. Well, well spoken, the whole thing, because it was written, written per the approved.
But then we just need to present this letter and the intent.
Yes.
Yes. In order to move forward with that.
Okay. And then, and then move forward toward the, the contract negotiations. Okay, so that is what we will.
The board will have input on the contract at some point.
Yes, again, you have a draft and any other suggestions you want to make. I'll forward then to Rich. He'll go in and then, uh, we'll present that to the group once we're back to this letter's clarification.
Yeah, and Rich is giving us thumbs up. Thank you, Rich.
I have a timeline question because I was approached by someone in the community that if you're going to approve, um, an application, that you have to have a public hearing within 30 days. And if that's true, we had a public hearing before, uh, 30 days before we did it in June, but we did not in October.
There's, there's no need for a second public hearing or subsequent public hearing. They had an application. They were given technical assistance. It was revised. And again, so the hearing, in essence, that we had us make is still good. Again, so we're, in essence, we're coming to a, a second revision, a revision of the revision that's gone, right? That's where we're at. We don't need to have another public vetting of anything. Yeah, Maureen, thanks. So the terms of the contract is it? Yeah, thank you for bringing that up because I, I saw that, that concern from people as well. So well done having that, bringing that up. Thank you. Well, um, if that's the case, do we need to, to make a motion and vote on? The, the, sorry, we don't, we don't do, we don't do questions in this part of the discussion. So, my, my apologies and I'll, I'll gladly entertain your question after the meeting. But that's just not, that's not part of the public meetings, are not. Okay.
Do we, I don't think we need to vote, right? We're just all.
We're just giving you the directions. Here's the annual council. Um, you'll have the drafts out tomorrow morning. We'll do that. And what I'm about to say is more to me, check your email list frequently. Yeah. Okay. So, um, we'll, uh, we'll move forward. Uh, Rich, I, I guess unless you would like to, uh, stick around and discuss, uh, our early literacy grant or not discuss, just listen. You're welcome to hang out, but, uh, we appreciate your time this evening.
Oh, no, my pleasure. And, um, I appreciate all of you being so rigorous and thoughtful about this process. It's, it's a tough, like I said, I've been on both sides of the table as a parent, an attorney, and these aren't easy, um, questions to answer. And there's all, I know there's all kinds of factors that you have to to weigh. So I appreciate everyone's hard work on this.
Good. Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Yep, you too. Bye-bye.
Okay, I need to gather myself just momentarily. All. Oh, yes, yes. Um, okay, yes. See, she didn't throw me at me. So our next up on our agenda, on our amended agenda, would be public comment. Um, but prior to that, we will have 10 minutes. Thumbs up on 10 minutes, 5 minutes, a 5 minute, 6 minute, a 6 minute recess. So 6, 6, 6 to 10, we'll say that. When we're all back sitting here, we'll get going. Okay. Okay. Hey, wait. Ladies and gentlemen, we could, uh, gather back, find your seats. And after this, we'll, class break. We're settling. Mr. A, was it the, what was it that you said at the elementary school class pass?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, there we go. Man, that was actually kind of fun. Thank you, class pass. That, yeah. All right. So, uh, thank you, uh, for allowing us that, that, that recess. Being able to stand up was, was, uh, was appreciated. Um, we're going to move now, since we amended the agenda, we're going backwards in number, uh, to 3.1 public comment. Um, we are, because we have quite a few of them, uh, we divided them up, uh, slightly to those. We have a number that are, uh, would like to address the, the charter school, um, item, and then others that are other than the charter school. So we are going to start with the four that are other than the charter school and then go to those with the charter school. Um, and just a reminder that we have, um, to, to uh, keep, keep names. So you can talk about programs. And just a reminder that we have to keep names, so you can talk about programs, you can talk about, you know, something that you're seeing that you're not appreciating, that you either are in favor of or not, but keep the names, specific people's names to yourselves, because we have a specific complaint process. There were a lot of words to say, we have a complaint process. So, we're also going to try to keep it to about three minutes. I'm going to set a timer on my phone, so when you hear the alarm, just wrap up as quickly as you can, so that we can get this going. So we are going to get started with Brian Reyes.
Good evening. My name is Brian Reyes. I'm a parent of a high school student athlete and the varsity team head coach. I'm here tonight to address the board about opening a path of communication that is currently not placed, not placed about the proposed softball facility, in which not one person has asked me what we need or what we'd like to see as a facility. I would like an opportunity to give input on what would be best for the softball programming, having the insight as the head coach, and what is best, with a good understanding of the daily routine and the softball practice and the needs of a softball program. And also share my concerns with what is being proposed, for example, removing the balcony access, in which case that is where our current batting facility is, and the only closet indoors where we store our very valuable items such as uniforms and other various equipment that really can't be stored outside in an uninsulated shed, which is what we have for our other storage unit. And another concern, the building of a small facility, which was written up and how it was written on your, whatever you guys had. It's standard briefing the program, which in turn would bring in some of the safety issues that are concerning the physical ed program, which is the supervision of kids from outside to inside to use the restroom in a P D physical education class, where you put restrooms outside. And in that case, it would be concerning to us where we'd be going from batting cages outside to throwing on the infield, practice on the main channel, it would be the same in terms of the other kids traveling back and forth from inside to outside unsupervised. I'm here to answer any questions you have tonight, and in the future about this project, and anything else about the softball program. I'd also like to say that I stay in close contact with the former head coach of many years, Sean O'Meara, that ensures his wealth of knowledge in regarding the softball program with me. And also, he would have great input on this facility as well. That being said, he actually had over storage area when he was in the program that we currently have now. I'm hoping to be very much more included in the process moving forward in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, maybe we'll get those questions at another time.
Okay, thank you. Then you all have my email, which is, plus you're on the website for the school.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right on. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Bob Orr, and I'll do just like a wrestling or cravney, on deck is Mike Allen.
Good evening. My name is Bob Orr, and I come to you for the second time in a few months. I'm chair of the vitally important, but currently inactive Facilities Advisory Committee and a member of the staff at SHS. In recognition of the issues being discussed tonight, I wish to reinforce the importance of financial and human resources to the ongoing educational processes in the Cyus Law School District. I hear often from members of the student body, the faculty and staff, that our high school building is inadequate to meet existing needs. We have small windows, classrooms, labs and offices, the absence of a kitchen, a dining facility, awkward lifts and steps elevators, insufficient space for creative 21st century teaching, a terrible HVAC system, and much more. There are two other factors that should be raising red flags. First, we do not have an auditorium. Many say that the FEC is an excellent facility, and it is just a few minutes away from the high school. Indeed, these are facts. But how are we to hold a morning meeting, a school assembly, a theatrical performance with rehearsals, or host a guest speaker or musicians when it was planned far in advance and sacrificed hours of classroom? To use the FEC, we must reserve space as well as buses and drivers, load 450 students into those buses, and unload them at the FECs, hold our meeting or assembly, load them back onto buses and return to school, all while not losing a single student escaping to Miller Park. The all part of it is to hold such events near gym, with its dreadful acoustics, uncomfortable seating, and lack of a stage with accompanying sound lighting curtains and other features. The other issue which cannot be ignored is earthquake saving. We know that our building will suffer major damage and perhaps collapse in an earthquake, any significant damage. For some people, this seems to be a nonstarter. What I hear is, a major earthquake will not happen in our lifetime. And maybe it won't, but we are overdue for a major earthquake. I also hear that if it's a really big earthquake, everything will collapse anyway, so nothing will be scientifically safe. But new construction techniques tell a very different story. Are we really willing to roll the dice with the lives of 500 children, young adults, faculty and staff? Please consider first and foremost the critical needs of our existing educational system and processes, and refrain from drawing much needed financial and human resources from the multitude of needs that we already face. We owe this to our present and future students, our families, our faculty and staff at our community. My accompanying request is that you authorize the reactivation of the Facilities Advisory Committee. We've got much work to do. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, and on deck is Jesse Chapman.
Well, is this okay?
Yep.
I, well, good evening, board members, superintendent N H G, and student representatives. We have two here, two more over here. My name is Michael Allen. My subject tonight deals with a, two things that revolve around our P T A's attempt to clean up our streets, the doctor's street building, and my pitch for an anti-littering campaign. My wife, Matt, and I participated in the P T A doctor's street cleanup this past Saturday, January 6th, despite the threat of rain. We were the only ones there by the way, unfortunately. But it was one of many that we joined over the past year, along with organizer Diane Beck Palma. Both of us feel our butts to the brim. It's good for us to clean up the mess, but what we really need is an anti-littering campaign in the schools to encourage our young students to keep our roads, sides clean. Hopefully, it will instill a lifetime of good stewardship for our earth. I encourage our principals to start campaigns in their schools to curb littering, and to set in motion a lifelong commitment from our students to protect our planet earth from the harmful effects of pollution. At last night's P T A meeting, the members fully supported the need for an anti-littering campaign in schools to complement their doctor's street program. And coincidentally, in today's Cyus Law News, associate editor Tony Reed described seeing lots of litter along Highway 101. He said, "This behavior is unconscionable for many reasons, not the least of which is environmental damage." He concluded that the only true solution is universal change in behavior. I agree. And it must begin with our youth. And our youth are on top of it. Storm, one of your student representatives has already started an environmental club, and she presented me with this book, which I won't say what it is, A, Pollution. Oh, plastic, actually. So I'm going to read it diligently. They're on board. Let's all of us get on board. And I thank you for your attention, and I wish you a productive, happy 24 and a productive.
Captain.
Thank you, Brian. I decided if I can wear this hat at football games and stores and various places around our city, I can wear it here at a school board meeting, just as well on the hard side. There's a new normal that is in our public school systems, and I'm uncomfortable. Thomas Paine, I didn't realize, I used to look this name up, should have been taught in our preschool history class. Thomas Paine accidentally inspired revolution in war. He's the one that inspired George Washington. But we need to read that, 40 some page pamphlet, to why Thomas Jefferson said every 20 years we need a revolution in this country. Thomas Jefferson said that. Thomas Paine also coined the phrase, "If you're afraid of what your others will think, what you're going to say, then you're not telling the truth." It isn't easy to come up here and say whatever about a quote, because I need to say it. I'll take the fallout how it comes.
And because, because it's true, I have a right to say this, it is a further reminder, I haven't had anybody stand up and take my time and oppose me on this board, Brian. Just Jesse, Brian, just.
I have a Second Amendment right. Okay.
Mr. Chapman, you're going to have another person interrupt you as well, if you say things that are against our staff or our students.
Say my point, Ben. Hey Jesse, hear what's going on?
Jesse.
I'm telling me to stop it?
Jesse, real quick, I've got, I've got, I've got your timer stopped, I'll even back it up 10 or 15 seconds. Just, just remember that extraordinary claims require extraordinary evidences.
You haven't heard what I've even said yet.
You're right, but you prefaced it with, I'm, maybe I shouldn't, but I will, I don't remember exact words. So, so the time, the time is now yours again, and, and I can, you and I, we're going to be looking each other in the eyes after this as well, and still shake each other's hands.
Yeah, we will.
So, you ready to go?
Yeah.
I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you five minutes to start your timer again, right?
Thank you.
Okay. We, we got you, brother.
Chris Jeff said, "I'm going to take over this country back in 1960, and I'm not going to fire a shot." We've done through by taking over our public school systems and taking God out of the public, public school system. It looks like that's what we're having the debate about tonight, whether we're going to allow somebody to have an affiliation and still be a part of the process and our education, but because they have something to do with religion, and we know who that is, and Jesus Christ, God Almighty, you're, you, we haven't learned our lesson yet. Either we're going to go get, allow God give us a chance again, and allow God back into our schools, the repent of the sin that's in our schools. I'm going to go straight to the point. The new normal is, the acceptance of evil within our public school systems, in my opinion, as sanctioned by the state of Oregon or the federal government, is no longer the exception, but the norm. I was raised on a farm. This is happening to, allowed to happen in our public school systems. We've taken away the right to the parents, that's the eight, well, that's it, sorry. Yeah. I'm talking to everybody in this building. If we don't allow God back in our school systems, then, I was raised on a dairy farm. We should take our calves out, it was a spear, because of Narnes off. To me, in my opinion, morally, what we're doing right now is taking our boys and taking our boys and tailoring them and making them human spirits in the name of sex change. And our, our urinals is like taking them to the vet.
Jesse.
And spathing them.
Your time's up.
Sex change.
Mr. Chapman.
Jesse, your time's up.
Remember Joseph, man? The butcher, history beating himself.
It's a First Amendment, Jesse. Jesse, 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 it's being unclear. Moving on, we're, we're changing, oh, I, this is, this is turned, okay. We now have, we are now going to move on to the, the topic. Well, it's your, it's your time, so you can, you can speak what you will, but I don't know, I'll do it shortly.
Because she was, she was.
Oh, I do not, I did not see one for Sally once.
No, it's in there.
In the, in the charter one?
Oh, my God. Oh, public comment. Okay. She's in there. Correct.
I did not see one.
She's.
Jesse, my.
She's in the other one.
Brian. Sally, you're up. Look, I just, I just, look, we'll be on this one. You're on this one. And when I find you in the pile, I'll just skip you then.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine. Okay, thank you. My name is Sally Wance, and I am here tonight as a Florence City Councilor and citizen. First off, I'm a Viking fan, okay?
Go Viking.
Love Oak Street, love all our schools, love our students, and support our teachers and the administration. The city of Florence has a 23-25 work plan, and it identifies priority projects and activities through 2025. The city's mission and goals are the foundation for the work plan, and each item supports at least one goal. The work plan provides a roadmap that includes plans and projects that address important issues related to our community. One such item on page 10 is called Community Outreach and Communications with five goals, one of which is citizen participation. Within citizen participation are five objectives, one of which is to develop methods for youth involvement in city programs and projects. On December 7th, the council met during a work session to discuss this very important objective and to explore ideas and approaches for enhancing youth involvement in city business and throughout our communities. I'm here tonight to let you know we are exploring tangible ways to entice our students within this school district to learn more about our city government and what opportunities there are to get involved. We talked that day about the pros and cons of establishing a youth advisory commission in partnership with 97 days. We talked about hosting a city council meeting at the high school. Do you have room for it? At the high school, so students can see firsthand how city business is done. We talked about inviting students to city council meetings to share what's going on in their service. We talked about student participation on one or more of our committees. We have a public art committee, we have an environmental management advisory committee, we have a transportation committee, et cetera. We want to find ways to get the students involved in these areas. I'm on board of working with your teachers, the administration, the school board, parents and students to find steps that are needed to take, give our students an opportunity to learn more about how council works, how the city managers and manages all that it does, and to hopefully pique their interest for the future of our community. We need to groom our future leaders, and it starts now with this group of kids. I have my business card here, if anybody wants, or you can reach out to me with your ideas on how we can accomplish this very important objective of youth involvement in our city. Visit the website, www.cifluence.or.us, and learn more about it. And I welcome the name, this, this student body, you all are fabulous. Congratulations for what you're doing. And door wiping and any other areas you, uh, so pursue, okay? Hopefully it'll be civics, right? You wanna get involved in the civics part. Okay, okay. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, uh, keeping with the wrestling and track method, uh, we'll go up. It's Amy Trugoni. On deck is Kathy Karma, and in the hole is Tracy. I think that's it. The leverage? Okay, that sounded like I got it right. Mr. Gumi. Oh.
I have?
Nope, not yet. You're, you're on deck. That means you're second. If you are, who are you? Are you Kathy?
No.
Oh, you're on deck. You're, you're up after Mr. Gumi. You can adjust that if you can figure it out.
Well, I think, is it fine? Yeah, because do you teach your voice since you're my. All right, um, I'm gonna go with what I came with tonight. It did sound like there was great conversation up here, and I appreciate that. Um, my name is Amy Trugoni, the natural resource CTE teacher at the high school, but parent, president of the local teachers union. And I was a little nervous to come here to tell you that I did disagree with your, uh, five-on-one vote that happened in October. But just because I disagree with you does not mean I dislike anybody. Uh, it does not mean that I disagree with charter schools. It just means that I disagree with that decision. Uh, there are charter, uh, charter schools offer some really odd, awesome, unique ways for students to learn. But I do disagree with Seislo Valley Charter for several reasons. The biggest was violating of O R S three three eight, which is discussed, uh, in the poll tonight. It puts our district in jeopardy of losing ninety percent of our working budget. It's about twenty-five million dollars. It's two hundred and fifty teachers. It's twelve hundred students. Seislo Valley Charter submitted a second revised application on October fourth. It was not shared with the public. Neither was proposed one day to September sixth. Or voted to approve the application seven days later. The vote caught most of the top guard. Uh, because no public information was out there, um, except the last, or the last information was a disapproved application of June twenty twenty-three. While there was, uh, while there was a public hearing a year ago, the public was unaware of the resubmission, and what changes may or may not have been implemented. While all of a sudden there was seemingly a rush to push a charter, charter school's doors open without the public knowing until October, uh, was disheartening. What information the board, uh, what information did the board have that made it change its mind? Um, I did request some information. I did get it. It has taken me more than seven days to go through it. Um, and I know between October fourth and October eleventh, that was about seven days to go through that application. Uh, Seislo Valley signs their intent letter of hillsale, private Christian college board, you want to read that too? And I'm definitely not going to debate for affiliation or association here tonight. Um, I do not understand the purpose of this particular charter school other than it looks like it's trying to create a private school, taking public funds. And if that happens, we lose our funding. That includes the charter school. They also lose their funding because they're associated with us. Uh, I can see O R S violations with the approval of this particular charter. When we break the law, the consequences is we lose our state funding. Consequences are approximately, like I said, ninety-two point eight percent of our budget. Whether we agree with the law or not, we face the consequences for breaking it. Our school district will not be able to sustain itself with a ninety-two percent loss of our budget, as well as the charter school affiliated with it, excepting it moving forward uh, with the contract put to all of our students in jeopardy and is irresponsible, facilities are responsible. I'm not anti-charter. I'm not anti-choice. But accepting this particular one violates Oregon law, and so it's not the answer. This is our town and our community. We should be allowed to know what's happening in our community and have some, some say in losing ninety percent of our budget, ninety-two percent of our budget because of a decision that affects, it's a decision that affects our student, family, and teacher, and it had no input from us. I disagree with how, uh, this wasn't presented to the public. Uh, when a rational thing can affect almost the totality of our budget, we won't be able to open our doors if there's no funding. Um, there we go. And I've already said that one. Uh, thank you.
Kathy.
I'm Kathy Farmer, and I agree with everything she said. Our, our, in this rodeo, both me, I live in this town. I love this community. I think the school is the center of this community. I think the teachers who teach in these schools are all an asset to this community. And I'm so confused as to why we want to divide our children. This is about our children. Our children don't care if they go to this school or they go to that school. This seems to be a parental issue that they don't want their children to go to some school for whatever reason. I went to a public school. I grew up outside of Detroit. We had the mafia back then. I mean, let's talk about how we had controversy in our schools. We all have gone to whatever school we choose to go to. Christian schools are wonderful schools. If you want your children to go to Christian school, send them to Christian schools. If you want your children to be taught religion in a school, send them to a school that teaches. Don't ask the public's tax dollars to pay for your agenda. And I'm really confused as to why our board is divided. We're supposed to all be for all of the Siduslaw School District, but now we're gonna have are so many of you gonna go to a different board, or are we all gonna maintain and stay on the same? I'm gonna tell you a quick story, and this is a personal story. I had a tenant living in a condo here in town, and he was a doctor and she was an attorney, and they had two, they had four-year-old children. They came to this town because they, um, they loved it. He was a doctor here. Their children, it was time to go to school. They were five years old. They called me out, said they were breaking the lease. They were going to move to Eugene because they didn't want to put their children in this school. What's wrong with the school? Well, they said the, the grade point average was too low. What are you talking about? How could the grade point average be too low? So I went over to the hospital, and I asked the hospital. I said, are you, I'm a senior citizen. I want a cardiologist in this town. We can't get doctors in this town because they don't want to put their children in this school. What's wrong with this school? So I started a campaign. I went to Andy, and I said, Andy, what's wrong with this school? I mean, nothing. Andy's a wonderful person. He's trying to hold this together. We are providing children that come to this school. Apparently, it's a daycare center. These teachers don't want to babysit these children. They're, they come here, they're undernourished. They're sleep deprived. They've got problems at home. These children, all of them, are provided by the parents in this community, and you are parents of these children. And now you're telling your children, we want you, we want something better for you. Then make this school better. Make this school. These teachers, these people are people who are providing a prejudice. Here's what I heard. Propaganda. They teach propaganda in this school. No, they don't teach propaganda in this school. My son teaches in this school. They don't teach propaganda. And I don't want to hear anybody on this board that's saying that this school is inadequate and we need a charter school because it's better. It's not. So same kids are gonna go to the charter school. They go to the.
Wrap it up.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up. Drop the charter school, make this school system better. Make it better and provide for this community. We love this community. Thank you.
Tracy, before you get started, um, on deck, so next up is, uh, Pat Sap and, um, Edgar Milkie.
My name is Tracy Laveridge. I'm all in here at Siduslaw Elementary. My daughter started teaching third grade a few years ago, and now currently teaches kindergarten. My knowledge and experience of charter schools is they can be a great asset in some school districts where the value of a public charter school is not outweighed by any directly identifiable significant adverse impact on the quality of public education of students residing in the school district. The public school charter school will be located in. I raised my three children in Medford, Oregon. Medford School District five four nine C has fourteen elementary schools, three middle schools, three high schools, and four public charter schools. It is a great example of community in need of public charter schools. I taught for Southern Oregon, had started Medford, Ashland, and Eagle Point. I was a head teacher at F R C campus in Red Path. I saw how due to overcrowding and growing the population of school-aged children, charter schools were and are adopted. My grandson attends a very successful charter school, Kids Unlimited Academy in White City. Kids Unlimited started as a before and after school program in Medford. They developed into a charter school after many years of planning and fundraising. After retiring, they lived in a small logging community in Butte Falls in the mountains above Eagle Point. The elementary and high school was closed in twenty twelve due to budget cuts, when logging industry began to decline. Butte Falls children were left down the mountain to Eagle Point schools. This was often in adverse, no conditions, no closures, and hours of long, bad script score initiative. The community rallied and did the hard work of opening a Butte Falls charter school to drive, to provide the children with quality education in their community. The program is a K through A at elementary and ninth through twelve at high school. My daughter taught in kindergarten class after moving home after college. I volunteered and implemented the PC program for the kindergarten class. Butte Falls only has a population of approximately four hundred and fifty people, but they have an awesome library, a few blocks from the elementary school. I would use puppets and various books to expand the neighborhood and children in the library. With parents' permission, the children would apply for the first library card before summer break. So I just thought elementary is very much like the kind, caring school I observed in Butte Falls. With teachers and staff who work very hard to provide social, emotional, and academic excellence here in Florence. The Siduslaw Middle School and High School offer quality teachers and education while offering children the opportunity to participate in sports programs. My concern about charter school here in Florence is the adverse impact of losing teachers and staff as eighty percent of state allocated funds per child enrolled in public charter schools will be lost. There are currently five classrooms in the kindergarten wing, of which only four classrooms are used, though crowding is not an issue. The public charter school has stated they will serve children in a thirty-mile radius enrollment zone. With their minimum, ideal, and maximum class size, it is inevitable Siduslaw will lose one class of students, one teacher, and one teacher assistant per grade minimum. This will not enhance Siduslaw students' experience, but rather cause crowding and loss. The public charter school has stated they want to use the state allocated funds for blessing, but they are in expectation of Siduslaw blessing to provide assistance. There is no kind of place to provide nutrition services for before and after school nutrition. Once again, the plan firmly is for Siduslaw District to provide services in some capacity. The public charter school plans on children being allowed on campus with need to research, how will visit that working families? Siduslaw has a terrific before and after school program that will also be affected by budget cuts, as many nieces of the five are allocated to public charter school. Thank you, and I sincerely support. This is a wonderful school district. The three facilities you have here, although, I mean, the high school would be nice. It is a wonderful school district. These are, all the kids are great, the parents are great. Um, I think everybody just needs to get on board and bring all the kids together.
Thank you. He left. Pat Sap left. Okay. Pat left. Why'd you note that? Uh, Mr. Milkie. Oh, hang on. Also on deck, thank you, Katie, uh, Seamus and, uh, uh, Reverend Dale Edwards.
I could, well, first I'm gonna say I'm honored to open up the seats. That should be awesome. Um, my name is Annie Milkie. I teach ninth grade world geography at Siduslaw High School. I started seventeen years ago as a janitor. Went back to school, finished my bachelor's, and completed my master's, subsequent teaching certification. By day, I did my practicums and student teaching with many Siduslaw mentor teachers. Many of these mentors are retired now. They have names you might remember like Rea, Omara, Paparini, Perry, Wells, and some are still here, and of course, my friend, Chris, go here. Then by night, I was cleaning their classrooms. It was a great journey. Both my kids went to Siduslaw. Came through graduate with honors and went on to earn their bachelor's of science degrees at a Pac-12 school. Not too shabby for Siduslaw grads. I'm proud of my, of Siduslaw in general, and I'm proud of my kids, my nephew, my nieces. Um, and even being here, very proud. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the proposed charter school based on the slideshow and presentations made last spring to the former board and to the presentation maybe this term board in October. Um, all lost my place. Their presentation would have you think that there's something wrong with Siduslaw's rules. They claim the need for choice, but their unsubstantiated reasons was that Siduslaw wasn't good enough, or at least that's what it amounted to. They cited national and statewide statistics that didn't even apply to the school district. Uh, they would have you think that cell phone use is running wild and rampant at Siduslaw schools. I'm a teacher, but not. It's not a problem. They would have you believe that teachers doesn't pay you lessons. Well, we do. They don't. It's a lot more involved in the process. The people who made these presentations actually know, well, from their presentations, know very little about how professional educators select curriculum to lesson plans and conduct, and conduct their classroom management. At one point, they described the need for a CPE program, CTE teachers we already have. I know, I spent the last five years of, of, of career developing two of them. Um, but trying to, this has gone too far, by trying to take money away from a perfectly fine school district. This proposed charter school has only success, succeeded in dividing our community. We are Siduslaw. It is all of our history, and it's the soul of our community. We don't need another public school dividing our public dollars as well as our community based on very unsupported wins. We already have a public school, and the reasons, from what I saw, just aren't good. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Burke. And then on deck, uh, Dale Edwards in the hole. Brian Hall.
All right, good evening. My name is Seamus Burke. I'm resident in the district and a current Siduslaw High School student. Today, I'm going to speak in support of the charter school, and I will address the key issues of money, performance, and school choice. This is a litigious topic, so I will speak to the facts and keep my remarks as brief as possible. Contrary to popular belief, charter schools actually increase school district funding. I quote the Foreham Institute's report on charter schools and district finances. In most states, an increase in the percentage of students attending charter schools was associated with an increase in both districts' local revenue per pupil, and in some states, it was also associated with an increase in state and or federal revenue per pupil. This being said, it is highly unlikely that having a charter school to our district will somehow bleed our coffers dry, as suggested. Additionally, any program such as sports that the charter school is included in would be no more burden than if the same student wasn't enrolled within the traditional school districts. Next, charter schools outperform traditional public schools. I quote the National Charter School Study Three conducted by the Center for Research on Education Outcomes at Stanford University. The typical charter student in our national sample kept reading in math games that outpaced their peers in traditional public schools they otherwise would have attended. These games could be about six intraprendal days' work in a standard school year and a half, or even can be or even as much as sixteen days in English over a traditional public school. This type of avid skills growth would greatly benefit our community and especially be valuable to students who struggle with these topics. We all make choices, every day, from the time we wake up in the morning to the time we go to sleep. One of the great things about life is the power of choice. By establishing this charter school, the district will simply be bringing takes more choice to students and parents as to where they wish to attend school. For some students and families, our traditional public schools may very well be the best option, but for others, a charter school may also be the best option as well. Allowing parents and students control where they attend school also introduces some level of competition, which will drive both the traditional public schools and charter schools to continue to perform better. Thank you.
That's great, Edwards. Thank you. That was our senior citizen, uh, uh, Hillary, meet right there.
Last guy that said that touched this.
What happened to him? What happened to him?
Fantastic. I'm here to support charter schools. Let me give you a little background. I'm a pastor. I've pastored for fifty-four years, eight separate congregations, and in four of those, we had private schools. Two of those, we had over five hundred students enrolled. I watched the curriculum because of my role to watch that curriculum. I have advanced degrees. I'm on two college boards, one in Wabikogo, one in Baguio, Philippines. Don't forget that education and understand the dynamics of education. Education and educators are called. To me, it's a noble profession, and it's a wonderful profession. I so endorse our schools, our teachers, our administration here in our school. And you know, I've supported this school in so many different ways. We feed so many kids on the weekend through the school year. We have contributed in many other ways. Oregon has a philosophy of being pro-choice, but it almost seems like it's pro-choice for anything other than education. Education in the sense that you shared earlier that we can draw down information off the internet that was free and published, and then turned around and said, but we have to re-secure that information from schools here in Oregon. So what is it? One or the other or both? I believe that a charter school is an optional choice for parents and students. It's not forwarded, it's not demanded, and it's not expected that every student go to a charter school. And it's a choice, a choice that a parent and a student has to make by themselves. Charter schools have the unique agility to teach a child in a way that's most formidable for their educational benefit. I have a grandson that graduated from charter school in Bodak, California. Had it not been for that school, he would not have graduated. But because of the agility they have in helping him learn to learn, he was able to graduate with a three-point-three GPA. So charter schools, in my book, don't take away from our school. And the fear that it's going to take funding away from our school, that's a red arrow. Because you're going to gain students that are probably being homeschooled and not even at all in the school at this time, and you know, the state's support is going to follow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Hall and on deck, uh, Dwayne Bean, and in the hall.
I got it.
Arthur Millerton.
I use these all the time. I'd like to commend the, the school board for proceeding to go forward with the charter school. Uh, I was listening to the attorney. That was interesting, and I have learned that words matter in law. And so affiliation, association, and how that might be interpreted really matters. I do know that, uh, that teachers' unions oppose charter schools historically. And so you're going to hear a lot of stuff coming from that era. And if you don't cross your Ts and dot your Is, you're going to be challenged for sure on that. And I would commend that you move forward the way you stated you would to clarify and work with that charter school to get this done. Uh, in Oregon, you know, it's talked about schools and whether we need a charter school or not. In Oregon, we have private schools. There is no query as argument against private schools, even though they might have religious background. But that's private. That doesn't take public dollars, but you can send your child to a public school, and even presidents have done that. And there's a reason they do that. They feel that would be a better education for their children. But it costs money. We don't have private school here in Florence, and many people can't afford it. Then we also have homeschooling. And people decide to homeschool. We don't hear any argument against homeschooling. People make that decision to do that, and they're able to do that, and they receive public funding to do that homeschooling at school. But in today's world, with both parents working, having to work, it would be almost impossible to go homeschool. So what's the choice that's given a parent who wants to seek a better education for their child? What is there for the choice for a parent to have? The only choice they have really is the charter school. And I think that the board has realized that that would be a valuable asset to this area. And I commend the school board for moving forward. I thought this is going to be a moot issue after the attorney gave the instructions as to what you might do to see that that happens, and you did make a motion, I believe, to proceed to get the charter school on board and have that done. So I commend the school board for doing that. So I, I am, I have been district resident for the past forty-eight years, so I've been here quite a while and watched a lot happen within the school district.
Long as someone goes a bit wild, Brian. Not other than, right, Mark? Yeah, uh, Dwayne, I think that says Bean. Yes.
Thank you, board, for all of your many selfless hours of support of our community here in Cyuslaw. But I think tonight we finally seen the elephant in the room. That elephant has a name, Hillsdale College. This is not a debate about school choice or classical education. As our legal counsel stated, the charter group had the chance to renounce their affiliation with Hillsdale College. And they refused. That is significant. So the question must be, what is so important about Hillsdale College? Well, if you read Hillsdale College's monthly newsletter, Privates, which I do, you'll see that Hillsdale College is committed to returning the United States to the kind of society that existed in nineteen fifty.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir.
I'll give you about five seconds that I, that I haven't stopped yet, so. Okay, that was, that was, that was a fantastic thumbs up, Chris. So yes, we are, we are back good, and I'll give you about five before I start again.
Thank you very much, sir. Hillsdale College represents an ideological, religious, and political agenda whose primary principles include returning to a world where the woman's role is confined to the home, and women are subject to the absolute authority of their husbands. And that's called the antithesis of radical feminism. Hillsdale College represents the suppression of voices of people of color, Native Americans, and all those dare to challenge the existing regime of truth in this country. If you want to see a concrete example of the embodiment of the Hillsdale College agenda, look no further than the state of Florida. The state of Florida boasts have been banned, including books that describe the experience of non-cisgender kids. The politicians have imposed a don't say gay policy. A fantastic AP English curriculum was forcibly modified to drop the writings of one of America's leading black intellectuals, Thomas H. S. Coates, because he was too critical of white supremacy. In Florida, and Hillsdale was supportive, they teach them history or their slavery actually had a positive impact. Did you know that? Why? It was vocational training. Were they good slaves could use when they got out, were correct of. All right, yes, sir. I just want to say, if that's what the proponents believe, then have at it, but pay for it on your own dime and don't lead our schools for your agenda. Thanks very much.
Oh, Madison Conde.
What do you think?
Oh, uh, we, 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 I saw you listen, but I heard no, I heard no noise.
Hello?
I, I can hear that. Okay. Um, one, real quick to, um, there's no Well done. We're back. I don't, I haven't got a thumbs up yet, but I think so. Good, thumbs up. Miss Miller come in.
Okay, good evening. Thank you again for the opportunity to address the word on the proposed charter school. I would like to begin by thanking Vice Chair Bill Denver for her insightful skepticism during the October vote. I was deeply saddened by the board's decision to move this application forward on the first read without allowing our community the opportunity to provide comments and questions. Open communication is the foundation of transparent, responsible decision-making. But alas, tonight, we are here to explore how a classical education charter inspired by the Hillsdale Christian College poses inherent risks to our district. Let us start with the proposition that the charter school would have an independent school board exempt from electoral requirements that raises huge red flags. School boards ensure representation by electing their members. This practice safeguards our democratic process. Moreover, as a teacher, I found specific offense in their repeated claim that the charter would be differentiated by their teaching of virtue. Our licensed teaching staff are deeply committed to fostering a holistic learning environment that nurtures not only academic excellence, but also the development of character and values. This charter is attempting to operate a private school by manipulating public funds. What we've seen here tonight is a question of trustworthiness and whether we're using our use of our valuable time and resources efficiently. Finally, the charter's proposed intent to allow parents to select their students, chose the name and pronouns, is in direct violation of the January twenty-twenty-three Oregon Department of Education guidance on supporting gender expansive students. And I haven't even mentioned the absence of a special education program. This lack of awareness around educational equity and civil rights mandates jeopardizes our district's adherence to state's virtues and equity on nondiscrimination. In evaluating the legal implications of tonight's decision, I urge the board to critically assess the potential risks associated with sponsoring sponsoring this charter. The presence of legal counsel here tonight underscores the gravity of this decision. Again, I implore our board to slow down and consider alternative charter options that align with our district's values and legal obligations. Let us champion models that prioritize equity, inclusivity, and fairness for all students. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your commitment to the wellbeing of our children's education. I hope that your dedication to our thorough, thorough and thoughtful evaluation will guide us toward decisions that genuinely benefit every student in the Cyuslaw School District. Ms. Free, I would like to hand a copy of my public comment to you to add it into the public. Thank you.
So I'm going to start slightly different than I planned. Counselor Watts, it was great to see you and being proactive to adding kids into this process. Your privacy, you leave here tonight without me and Seamus. Seamus, Counselor Watts, number one, Seamus. Please didn't know each other. Sorry. The other thing I would like to bring up is initially, we just came tonight, I wasn't going to speak. But after seeing the conversation with the attorney, so much incorrect information the attorney had. For one, we've never, uh, removed special education. Of course, special education is a part of our, of our curriculum and our plan. We don't want to exclude special education. For him to say that was shocking to us, to the point that my watch told me my heart rate went above a hundred and twenty beats per minute, I need to calm down. It's important that we make sure we have accurate information. The attorney spoke many times about not speaking for us, but he did a lot of speaking for us. He spoke a lot negatively. We are not a political organization. This is not a political curriculum. At no point has it ever been, the curriculum hasn't changed from the last time we spoke. He also spoke about it being religious. His curriculum is not religious. If he was doing research and found that a religious curriculum, then it was his mistake. Because Hillsdale does create a private Christian curriculum that is produced in a separate office than the K-12 Education Office that we have been working on, on the curriculum portion itself. Our curriculum is not a religious curriculum. We at no point have ever entered into a situation where we wanted to have a religious curriculum. I think that might be where a lot of the total confusion is, is people are not truly looking at the correct information. So we want to also make sure that we let the board understand, from what you guys spoke about tonight, it did help me to calm down, because the things that you spoke about are all the things that we were looking for anyway. We do have a piece on our website that we felt would have been inappropriate for us just to remove. When we sent our letter, um, explaining the situation, we thought it'd be wrong just to make something just disappear. It has stayed there until we actually had an opportunity to hear back from you. We did send our information all the way back to the first of December, and it's been very difficult to get anything back from the board. So that has not disappeared. It will disappear tonight, but we didn't want it to just vanish, because we felt like we'd be hiding something. Our board, founding board, has never worked to try to hide anything. We have been upfront on everything. We have been, we've asked repeatedly if the curriculum was okay to use. We've asked both the superintendent, we've also asked OBE. We have been given that okay. The curriculum that we are using has not changed from day one. The letter of intent that we sent, that is on our website, has been on our website since day one. It has always been part of what we've been doing. If it was missed and, and it was missed by the board and it wasn't brought to our attention beforehand, then, then we apologize. But most certainly, it's something that we can't talk about. We want, want just better communication, quicker communication, not with these large chunks at a point. Unfortunately, a lot of people left here tonight after the attorney, thinking that we are a political and religious organization and that we don't want special ed in our school.
Word wrap it up.
And that is not accurate. So we are looking forward to your letter. Looking forward to working with you, uh, again. Nothing has changed from our last meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Madison Conde, and then she's, uh, coming to the microphone. Uh, Ms. Free, have we gotten any others, or is this, this, this is the last? Madison.
Hello, everybody. My name is Madison Conde, and I'm a ten-year student at Cyuslaw High School. I came up here opposing the charter school once again, and I'm worried about this charter school. From what I know, it will take funding from the school that needs it. It may make life for our students worse. And. The teacher, we need the, if there is even a slim possibility that ninety-seven percent of our funding is cut. Or for the charter school. I don't want to take that chance. For a lot of people. This school and these teachers are like second homes, second to parents. And. I'm also growing up here as someone who has attended a charter school in the past. It was, yes, it was nice and I did get to go on some cool field trips and do some things that I want to get to do in a whole school. But then again. The school was understaffed, um, in retrospect. Two breeds per classroom and I didn't get the. Necessary educational building blocks for what I needed. I am still behind in things like math, unfortunately. And, um. Before I was diagnosed with my anxiety disorder, there. I know this won't be, this might not be you guys. But their solution was to push me out of the classroom into another classroom and just ditch me from the lessons. And with the. Teacher shortages all across the country, I'm afraid that'll happen if this goes through. And. I don't want that for anyone else. Especially since moving here from California about five years ago. Being here in Sayu Slaw has been the best part of my life. I've met people. That love me and bully me and teachers that help and. I've never been happy at this school and I have. No intention of. Even thinking about anything happening to that for me or for anyone else that might be there. I. It's sad for me seeing teachers having to pay for necessary school supplies out of, out of their own pockets. We all, our school is already. To be frank, in disarray. And. Things like. A water pipe bursting last year I heard about. And. A critter problem I heard about and. We need that funding for our teachers, our students. And our communities. I cannot. I do not want. Anything to happen to that. As much as I rag on this school, I do love it here. And I don't want anything bad to happen to it. I have little cousins in this school district. And I don't, and I want them to have the, the same good experience with it as I have it. And. I hope. But I also wish to speak about. I did not know about this meeting until yesterday. I want to, that I heard about it with my friends on the school board. And. I personally believe that there should be some sort of. Get the word out about these, about these. Meetings because. If I didn't know about it, I wouldn't be able to talk about it like this or anyone else would be able to know about it like this.
Worked rapidly.
Sorry.
No problem.
I'm just saying. That Sayu Slaw is not. Is a great school and we cannot let anything happen to it. I, there are many people here that are happy. And we should take that happiness away from them.
We did, uh, we didn't see one more. Uh, I just stuck hand in another intent to speak. Uh, Mr. Aaron Tipler.
Yeah, good to go. So I'm going to put the board and raise the boards and, uh. I graduated here, went to college, did some things, but the school's changed. I think the values are changed. And I think the charter schools are good for different options. Um, there is another option. There's the public or the private school for like private. And a lot of people want to go there, but there's a cost to it. And so I think opening up the charter school will give people more options to be able to. Align with maybe their values or however, just give options. I guess is what the best thing that it would be for students. Keep on pushing on.
Thank you. All right. Uh, thank you all for, for your, for your comments and, uh, you know, those, those that were on the fly and those that were, um, were, were prepared. Um, we, we appreciate those. Give me one second to, uh, set some things aside here. And directors, we will be moving on to six point four, is that right? Six point three, six point three. So, uh, let's make sure. Check the timer ready to go. Camera ready to go. Hey, ready to go. Ready, right? Yeah, six point three. Okay, uh, business item zero one, one zero two four, six point three. Action three, capital central projects, action books reading. Uh, extended over twenty-five thousand dollars and require the review. I'll let them settle. Yeah, thank you. Oh, we got a request. Yeah, we'll do a five minute recess. That's fine. Amy Meroli raises hand. Thumbs up. Uh, moving forward, end of that recess, six point, oh, look, there at the end of the reset. Um, six point three, S R three. Uh, again, uh, first grade, uh, capital central projects. Uh, again, the expenditure is over twenty-five thousand, required review and approval of local school boards. And it's last year, S R three, there are additional projects to be completed involving facility upgrades in elementary and high school. As well as replacement and preventive fleet vehicles. Uh, administration recommends more. Uh, through the capital center project that submitted to the elementary, local area, uh, high school softball, head line upgrade. Vehicle purchase for students and district services. And first reading, again, give five people the chance to go through this. I would suggest that this go on the next month's agenda for secondary. We need a motion and a vote to put other people on the issue. Automatically moving on to six point four, early literacy grants. Okay, uh, early literacy grant, uh, zero one, one, zero two, four, six point four, uh, first reading, action, uh, again. In twenty twenty-three, uh, through leadership of Governor Kotak, the Oregon Legislature established, uh, early literacy. Integrating early literacy success initiatives. Uh, they run ninety-five different roles. Increasing early literacy for children in birth to third grade. Reduce, uh, literacy academic disparities for students in groups that have historically experienced academic disparities. Increase support of parents and guardians who enable them to be partners in the development of their children's literacy skills and knowledge. And increase access to early literacy through, uh, support that is research aligned, culturally responsible. Student and family centered. Um, initial filing the application and plan, uh, that's prior by thirty E S, January eighth. Uh, over the next few months, the literacy plan may be modified. That pays for distribution of funds. Uh, in this year, the primary allocation is for roughly eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, next year will be for twenty-fourth, uh, again, ninety-one thousand dollars. Uh, and the primary plan selected by the elementary team, uh, would be for material services and professional development. Uh, administration recommends the board approve this at the next board meeting. Okay, pushing to six point five. And, and for this, it, it basically had a, uh, thumbs, a thumbs down vote through the board and assorted wanted to join into this. Action. Um, zero, one, uh, one, zero, six, four, six, one, five. Organ advocates for school trust lands. Uh, this is a request that is coming to the district for participation. Any organ advocates for school trust lands. Uh, affirmation of this request would make the district department litigation. To challenge the current management by Oregon school trust lands and provide better funding for schools. I'm not sure that the board joined in with the Oregon advocates for school trust lands for the improvement of the state school fund.
Based on counsel.
Uh, no, this is again, in essence, it's joining in a, a class action lawsuit at the expense of. Um, uh, the, uh, ASTL, um. Which means not us. Which means not us, yes. Um, and again, the, the, the idea behind this is that, um. The lost revenue from natural resources and timber receipts is a direct action of, of state legislature. And this would challenge their management of state forests. And force them back to a model that funded schools more from that source. And so how they've changed it over the years, that was detailed in the packet. Uh, and again, if people haven't had time, we've received this packet before. Um, and the group that originally filed. Um, uh, was told that they did not have standing because they were not clearly individuals and not school districts. So now they're coming back to school districts and saying, you used to be funded at this level. And, uh, and much of it was from timber receipts. So. Tell the state to go back to a model that had, again, a, a different model or better model for generating timber receipts in districts.
I will say there was a time, briefly, to take a look at schools like rural Portland, for example. That was a school that way exceeded the ability of the power that was built on timber dollars. Particularly some of these rural schools. I mean, yeah, you look at it now, it's kind of funny, but it's subdraining. I mean. There, it was incredibly overdeveloped, incredibly expensive construction. It never would have been possible today. So I, there's.
Well, and I think the, the second benefit this to do is there was so many natural resource businesses in our community. Pushing this along benefits that aspect of our community as well. Sure. Um, so this is, this. I see a lot of upsides to this personally, um, that, that there's potential revenue for schools across the state, um, that is not being tapped into right now. Uh, but so they, they need to, the request of participation is actually due by the fifteenth, um, so we will not have another meeting. So this needs. But you said we can just go like the thumbs up or to me. Yeah, again, if such a form, just a resolution and, and voted as approved.
Or.
Yeah.
Or charity result, sites that school district ordered record for partners, Oregon advocates for school trust lands and litigation. To approve the state school budget resolution, zero, one, one, zero, two, four, dash, six point five, Oregon advocate for school trust lands.
Second.
Okay, motion made for resolution zero, one, one, zero, two, four, dash, six point five, Oregon advocates for school trust lands. Uh, made by John, Director Barnett, seconded by Director Sneddon. Um, those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Um, we've done six, six. Unless we want to do that again.
Everybody.
Um, six, seven. Okay, uh, OSAA corporate sports agreement. Uh, item, uh, zero, one, one, zero, two, four, six, one, seven. This would be an action item. Again, uh, OSAA allows her schools to partner together with others to provide activity programs going between. Districts where one district does not have a comparable program to offer their own students. Uh, sites of high school has received a request from Meganland School to enter a corporate sports agreement. Baseball in that season. Uh, MHS does not have a sufficient student population to sport their own sport. And requesting, uh, that they need to move it on to baseball this upcoming season. Administration recommends that the board of directors and branch approval of corporate sports agreement baseball movement for the next four years time long. Is that four years because one of the requesters is a freshman? Of course, it's just this hand that's more to deal. Typically, it's a four year, typically it's a four year deal, but it works out well because they do have. One of their purchases is a pressure. Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve resolution zero, one, one, zero, two, four, six point seven.
Second. Motion made to approve resolution zero, one, one, zero, two, four, dash, six point seven. Uh, made by Director Sneddon, seconded by Director Barnett. Those in favor, well, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor? I, I oppose any unanimous. Getting into, uh, our reports and information, um, we'll go to, uh, superintendent of education, Senator May. Okay, again, so for this month, personnel report, January tenth, twenty twenty four, new employees, per contract approval by the board. Classified paraprofessional staff, Michael Ford, Cisal School District Food Service Worker, Darlene Bethel. Cisal School District Food Service Worker, both are in three hour day of our kind positions. And then, I know not in your packet, as it was recently announced today, head and body well coached, next high school begins care. And then, administration has worked to secure another certified substitute and another certified press member. Once a year, we're required by policy to review our virtual enrollment and interdisciplinary transfer numbers. So, again, since we just recently got our update on the latency homeschool registry, and I was able to complete that, the policy. So, in the area, there was roughly fourteen hundred students, that would be and twelve hundred and twelve on our side, when I did this last month, we're now up to twelve twenty three. And then, looking down, we've got about fifteen students involved in virtual transfers. And then, as far as interdisciplinary transfers, we've got six students coming in from two neighboring districts, and we've got six students that have gone out of neighboring districts. So at this time, there's no need to adjust any numbers, we'll come back to interdisciplinary transfers in May, so the official will stand one. How many we need, how many we need out, the petition has been twenty, but it's always been proven, so. Just as a, kind of a notice to the board, I've been in contact with our local police chief, Mr. Fisher, and we'll be proceeding forward with the community oriented police services grant to continue to fund our student services. We're seeing that. Already talked early with. And again, probably the best part of my report, you've got your December students of the month in the packet. And we had parents where notice go out earlier this week, updating website with our November and December, five things of the month for all schools. So again, if people have a chance, hit the students of the month, month button on the homepage of each site, and check out, gives them a done some excellent work the last couple of months. Excellent, thank you. Moving on, seven point two, C C, business manager, communications.
Come on, okay. Good evening, directors. This is our annual audit and review for the fiscal year of twenty two twenty three, so you've been presented with the current audit book. I'm gonna do a quick overview of the highlights and navigation through the navigation through the audit book itself, also review the audit opinion. And, and then we'll do some look overview of the general funds and how it changed from last year. And our overall ending fund balance, so. So, starting with page two of the presentation. This is the letter that you'll receive that's actually inside your audit books. And this shows the opinion from the auditors and also what they looked at and their methodology on the review. And with the Sayu Slaw School District, we have an unmodified opinion, which means that we're good, we actually met all of the requirements, our financial statements are in good order, and also presented fairly and accurately, and also meets the guidelines for GAAP, which is the accounting principles that are generally accepted by the financial institution of America, so there we go. So we're not gonna go through the whole letter, it'll go through all their methodology, so we're gonna go ahead and go to page five. There were also so this is where you're gonna see like the financial highlights and also the navigation of the audit documentation. So let's go ahead and start with our net position. So our assets exceeded liabilities by six point one million, that means we're still in good standing as far as our assets and our liability outflow. It did decrease from last year, and the reasoning for that is anytime you take on new liabilities like the, the we had an increase in cash and a, and a we had an increase in cash, but we also had an increase in our liabilities. So that has to do with the offset from receiving the two point one million on the loan. And then also, we had an actuarial increase on our pension bonds, so that offset lowered our net position overall. Our total debt as of six thirty twenty three is seven point nine million compared to the six point five million at the close of the twenty two fiscal year. And then, of course, it is due to taking on the liabilities of the loan for the roof of, for the middle school. So that's where you'll see that change in our financials. Our current general fund balance that ended on, at the end of last school year, was, is one point nine million compared to three point five six million at the close of twenty two fiscal year. The changes in the general fund really come from the increase in salary scales and benefits. The change on the, that information, anytime you change a pay scale, it also extends over to any extra duty contracts, so we'll see that increase. Also, a decrease in the, in the general fund balance is also from like a six to nine month lag on expenditures during our S R two closeout. So we have to go through an administrative review and get items approved that we've already expensed out. And we were able to close out S R two and receive all of the remainder of the grant funds, but we did not receive that until after the close of the fiscal year. So you will see that change when we come up into the new year. And, so on the second part of that summary, you're gonna see the navigation of the audit document, and that will assist you in reviewing the full document. It'll give you all of the terminology and ending fund balance information and all of the balance sheets from all of our funds, so. And the overall, so we can take a look at the next page, which is page six, we're gonna go over our general fund, which is our main operating account. And you can take, well, I'm not sure you can see, but on your paper, you're gonna see that the majority of our funds come from our property taxes, of course, and our local option levy, as well as the interest from our, our general pool of money that is held at the state, so that's where our interest comes from. You're also gonna see the money from the state school fund, as well as our high, high cost disability and our county school funds. And then if you can scroll up a little bit, you could see the comparison from twenty one to twenty two, to twenty two twenty three, so you can see that we did have an increase in our overall revenue, of course, because we had an increase in our taxes, and that's where a majority of that came from. So on to the next page. This is where you're gonna see the expenditure change. And we know that most of our funds go to salary and benefits, it's almost eighty, eight, eighty two percent overall. And then if you scroll up a little bit, you'll get to see the numbers and the differential. So anything that, as far as the increases on this, this is where you can see we're like thirteen percent increased on our overall expenses, which does hit our general, that which does hit our ending fund balance. Anybody have any questions or comments or anything? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If we have so much money, why can't we build a new high school?
I could partially answer that. Now, once the facility advisory committee had done an actual review of what it would take to actually replace the high school, I think, and I, I don't wanna be quoted too off, you can tell me. The first quote is eighty million for the whole project, but that included additional items for other schools, right? Is that correct?
And then we had, I'm sorry. Figure out a slide button. Now, again, the last proposal for a high school was eighty eight million. The total bond package was a little over a hundred million because it involved replacing the south end of the elementary school, so it got a bit muddled up because, again, it wasn't just a high school or an elementary school, it was two things. And so, based on that estimate of eighty eight million for the size of that it was. Again, if you look at construction costs over the last five years, I think we've, it's, it's a hundred, ten hundred fifteen, again, not including other projects. And so, again, coming back to facilities advisories, and then either looking at again, if it's a revised high school or a new high school, and then coming up with plan for that, then taking it to the voters for a bond. And so, again, like our general operating fund every year is twenty three to twenty five million. And so, we would have to spend four consecutive years of that funding to just buy high school with that, and so so in Oregon, all of your facilities needs are bond projects. Sponsored by your local.
Meaning it has to be voted.
Gotta be voted. Yeah, local vote, yeah.
Does that answer your question, Thor?
So building things costs a lot of money, and building them to the specs for school standards, when you get to commercial education, it's every single regulation you can think of, and then one more.
Yes, pretty accurate. What I should do is, I know what our previous auditors, they, they made a record on, there was a board that was interviewed by the auditors, you know, Brexit. But typically, they would, we would like, if somebody is sent out to auditor, to kind of have a one on one, so they can kind of have a candid conversation. At least to give you here, you know, they ask, okay, is there anything that you're seeing, problems? Obviously, there wasn't, we've had, you know, very good business managers yourself, well into that. But it's always nice to be able to have that conversation, so we can come back and they can report to us, you know, before this comes out, so it's it's kind of a preparation for the ad boy that, you know, we've been very fortunate to have, you know, when, you know, you're self acquitted, so just curious why we didn't have that, that stuff, these guys.
We actually did have, I don't, yeah, we actually did have the review, and I think it was a fair luck.
It wasn't you, doesn't mean it didn't happen, John.
I know about it, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I, I chatted with, and, and this is still, we haven't gone to the new, the new company yet, this is the last.
Yeah, this is, this is our, our company, H P W and CPA, so they're still, they finished out our year. And they had great things to say about the Sayu Slaw School District and the financials, and being able to speak with the chair and, and the board, and, of course, the administration, so. But, yeah, there were no findings, all of our statements were accurate, and also there were no question costs on federal funds, that's a big thing with S R. There's a lot of regulations Andy and I go through, and administrators go through several months of explanation on items purchased, as well as descriptions prior to the purchase, and then, of course, I have all the regulations on prevailing wage and and, and R F Ps are rate for proposals and that type of quotation, so, yeah, so I think it was, it was a, a great review. And, and it was fairly, we got ours in November, a lot of people had not received theirs by Christmas, so. I think we had everything accurately completed in the spring, and we had everything in order when they showed up in September, that they really only stayed one day because they had everything that they needed to review virtually, and then they contacted us up and on in October, so I think it was a good review.
I think that's extremely understated. The difficulty in your job is stepping into a new district to find zero findings like this, it doesn't happen. I remember talking to these officers over the years, they had horror story, a horror story, and always would talk about what a great job that our business managers do, and having one or two minor findings is always pretty typical, so to hit the side of a ballpark with zero findings, that's, that's pretty, so, good job.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you. And then the, the rest of it, the rest of the funds, they all are determined by our grants, so you're not gonna see a whole lot of fluctuation. You're gonna see, we have a SKU cab debt service fund, and you're gonna see that it's only gonna be building interest because now we are in the downside of that bond that we had on the roof of the elementary. So we're just gonna see interest on whatever is remaining, and then we will come to you and we will talk with our auditors about closing that out after twenty twenty seven. And then you know about our new construction, I don't need to explain the construction fund, the middle school is complete, and we will close out that fund at the end of the year, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and well done. And am I, am I safe to say that as, as we are going through this audit, if there's any questions, that we can contact you, C C?
Absolutely, anytime, email, phone.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, the administrator reports, thank you, Admin, for, for putting all of those together. And, and I, I appreciate getting some of the feedback from the, the different teachers and, and the others that you, that you got some inputs from, that was, that was cool to read. Thank you. If, if y'all won't mind, we're just gonna see if any of us have questions for you per your reports, unless you would like to go line by line. Andy, Andy Merle says he wants to go line by line. And he wants everybody to go line by line. So, Director, any questions for, for the administrators? Okay, thank you, keep, keep up, good work.
I'd just like to say, I don't want to experiment, just commentary and stuff on that, it's not for the folks who see the photos of the elementary school, that's.
Yeah, yeah, the, the flying a spirit, something down the, the street, that's, that's good. I also, I'm going to push the reviewing of the letter from, from Mr. Bott, we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna push that. So we'll go into future meeting days, the eighteenth, next Thursday, is our, our work session at five thirty, and that unless we have to change venue, that will be back over at the district office, the fourteenth. The regular February fourth meeting, isn't that Valentine's Day? Excellent, you had a Valentine's Day.
Yeah, that's a good idea for me.
I thought, I meant to. So, so what did you just say, would we like to change that? Yes, if you'd like to change that, we have time, but.
And I'm gonna be a grandpa right around then, so don't count on my attendance in there, I will be there if I can.
Okay.
No matter anywhere you're in, every time I stand, I can hear you by head, so.
Do we want to communicate via email to change this date, or do we want to establish something now?
Does anybody else have a issue? I, I won't be able to because I own a restaurant where I'll need to be.
Oh, good point.
It's a busy night for me, but if I'm the only one, and possibly John for, you know, which could be anytime, we don't need to move it.
Yeah, the date is the thirteenth, so I mean, I assume somewhere in that.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem.
Yeah, don't move it for me.
Okay, Wednesday's a weird night, if you take your wife out on the date anyway, or your husband, or whoever. Okay. So we're gonna keep it for now, thank you. Twenty six, not twenty sixteen, two sixteen, the sixteenth of February, is the bonds balance ability conference in Salem. Debbie needs to know who's going today, I will not be attending.
I just need to know who's going to go.
Okay.
If anybody wants to go.
Thumbs up. I absolutely wanna go unless something, as my previous comment happened, that's, you know, that Brandon shows up later or something like that, but I very much would like to go.
How do we know, because I gotta do hotel reservations.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna do, I'm gonna get my own hotel, so we'll be able to burn that, because of that.
You want me to register you anyway, though?
If, would that be possible? I'm pretty sure I was just gonna get my, get my own hotel, just because I could, I'd wanna, I'm a district paper, I'm a member, but I may, may not be.
So I'll register you for the conference, and then you're gonna do the hotel yourself, okay?
Debbie, is the conference just Friday, the sixteenth?
Yes.
Starting presumably.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
All right, and then, okay, thank you. My name's longer, but I'm still interested. My name's longer, but I'm still interested.
You're gonna go.
Okay, um, the twenty-eighth is our special meeting, the superintendent evaluation. We will have Vince Adams with us for that. Um, the night of March, the annual rotary auction, the district sponsoring table for the event, and there are currently six open seats. Uh, we have time to discuss that later. If any board members interested, interested in attending, please let the district office know. Rotary requests advance notice for table seating times, who else's event coordination. Uh, the thirteenth of March is our regular board meeting, the tenth of April is our regular board meeting. Oh, you're just turning it off. Okay, okay, sorry. Um, seven, point, five, board member knowledge, please, my apologies. There, okay, yes, oh, remind the public that this meeting is being recorded and can be watched on YouTube. For the public that all left, um.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Um, Dan, anything for, for the body?
I, I do have a question. Being new, um, newish. When do people make public comment? When do we as a board discuss what was said?
The last one, two to three.
So, um, like, a couple months ago, um, we had some kids in here, um, talking about the coat for soccer. Um, we've never discussed that. I don't know, in the, um, in the past, there was, um, a discussion on the homework. I don't, and we've never gone back on that either. I just don't know when as a board do we discuss public comment.
So what's happened in, so what's happened in the past with some of those items is that the board chair has directed me to deal with those. Um, and sometimes I report back and have made public report on that item. Again, um, or some are, again, personnel matters, like if it's athletics, um, I would defer to the, I tell the, you know, athletic director and the principal come to find, get working on finding resolution to that. Um, and so, again, if there's something specific from public comment that the board wants me to follow up on, it's just a suggestion, and then if you want me to report back publicly on it, and I can, I will do so at the next meeting.
Okay, so if I thought there was something we needed to discuss, I would just contact you.
Right, because it may be something not just specific to that comment, it may be a regular discussion item to put on the agenda.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. And, and correct me if I'm wrong here, oftentimes it's, it's, if they, if somebody has not consulted the district website and they know what the, what the chain of command is to first the teacher or coach, then the, then oftentimes the, the person who needs to intervene and address the, the concern steps in and does that, and then.
There's no need to.
Yeah, yes, yes, so, so, so I would imagine if we're getting the one, the, the individual month after month saying the same thing and saying nothing is being happening here, then we need to address that a little, a little, little more directly. But, but oftentimes it's the, I'm frustrated, I'm gonna go to the school board, the chairman, it's the wheels, uh, the wheels that need to start aren't turning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So the clarification.
Good. Anything else? Hey. He says no, Maureen.
Yes, I have two quick things. Number one, I wanted to add my appreciation to CC for this wonderful, wonderful, uh, that's just, um, incredible. Um, and the other thing is, I really wanted to thank, uh, the people and the students that made that wonderful video for us for appreciation. That was awesome. It was just really, really enjoyable. Um, just really appreciate the time and thought that went into that. Thank you.
Hey, Brian. Before your adjourn, I have one more really short thing for you guys.
Okay, um, John.
I don't wanna have anything, I just want my kids enjoying Spirit Week at the high school, and, and so I've seen in the reports on those things, um, by watching, uh, Winter Athletics, and that's all, all I got.
Excellent, John. Diana?
Um, the only thing I have is, is, um, when would we be able to put the reinstatement of the facilities advisory committee on the agenda? Can we just say, can we just say do it?
Start over with talking about?
Yeah.
No, we haven't. Like, turn it on. And now you're, again, no, wait, again, if you want to roll, I'll just talk to Bob and we will find a date and then let the board know and start. Uh, probably gotta recruit some community members because we've been, yeah, on two years. Um, and so, again, the, and then it'll be to the board to determine what are the goals for that committee. And that's really what they need to focus on.
Don't we usually have, uh, uh, one or two of us that's on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to revisit that and make sure that they're current and.
Yeah, I don't know who's ever been, it's just not hold.
It was, yeah, I was just putting on a hold.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that those board members that were on it are still here, because I don't know who it was. But, but also, you know, so if, if one of them is gone, or two of them are gone, then we make sure one of us.
Well, again, of the seven of you that are sitting here, which two would like to be on the facilities advisory committee?
Okay, so we don't know who was.
Yeah, I was.
I have to look at that.
But not, not.
And then, and then, again. Bob Stedden was for a while, um.
And Frank.
And Frank Armagh.
I have to be honest, give some historical reference.
Yes. Okay, so again, think about it, and so it's gonna be John plus one. I do, because that's the kind of stuff that I understand. Yeah, again, as long as, as long as we don't have four. Three is okay. Right?
Okay.
Brian and Maureen?
John, Maureen, Brian.
Every, that's certainly not a bad thing, you know, yes, I, I don't know.
Great, good. Okay, Debbie, you say you have another, uh, uh, video?
Yep, really short. Pay attention.
So, here we go. There was noise when I said that, so nobody heard it.
Um, I would just like to say that after all of the public comments, that I do believe it would be best to not go forward with the charter school. Just because our high school is currently falling apart, and so are all the other schools, and we could probably focus on fixing those before.
Thank you. Court, anything?
Not tonight.
My apologies for neglecting you during the, the board communications, the both of you.
Good.
Meeting adjourned.